Sorry, microphone. Welcome, everybody, to our February 15th work session. Hope everybody had a wonderful Valentine's Day weekend. Nikki, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Absolutely, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We are missing Commissioner Gow this morning. He is in Tallahassee as his role as our PSTA liaison, so he's up there fighting for the good fight of transportation and transit in Pinellas County. So we wish him well, but can I... We couldn't remember whether we did the motion or not, so can I take a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Vice Mayor and Commissioner Frainey.
For an excused absence.
For an excused absence. Yeah. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Thank you. And next, I will turn the presentation of Peace Poll Month proclamation over to Commissioner Frainey.
Okay, and I'm not sure who's going to be coming up to receive it. You can all come up.
Everybody can come.
What are you doing? Peace Day in Dunedin. Whereas the Peace Poll project began as a global initiative in 1955 by Japanese teacher, poet, and philosopher Mahisha Goy following the devastation caused by World War II and the atomic bombs dropped on his country. And whereas the message may peace prevail on earth came to Goy in a moment of prayer and inspiration, words that have the power to shape our world, bringing peace and harmony to our personal lives and our beautiful planet. And whereas Peace Polls inscribed with this message began to appear across Japan and then spread by means of the Peace Poll Project, making its way to the United States in 1986, quote, "The Year of International Peace," unquote. And whereas Rotary International, founded on February 23rd, 1905, is the world's first and one of the largest nonprofit service organizations that focuses on the promotion of peace and goodwill throughout the world. And Rotarians believe that when people work to create peace in their communities, change can have a global effect. And whereas the Rotary Clubs of Dunedin, Dunedin North, and Dunedin Waterside wanted a way to unite people together to inspire, awaken, and uplift the human consciousness in our community and agreed to plant a Peace Poll in Dunedin. And whereas the three Rotary Clubs titled their Peace Poll Imagine Peace to honor the first female president of Rotary International, Jennifer Jones, who chose Imagine Rotary as her presidential theme for 2022-2023. And whereas the Dunedin Community Center at Highlander Park overlooking the pond was chosen as the perfect spot in Dunedin to stand as a silent vigil for people to sit and reflect, bringing peace inside each one of us. We are all a part of this community, our country, and world. Now, therefore, I, Maureen Mofraney, by virtue of the authority vested me by Mayor Julie Ward Bajowski of the City of Dunedin, Florida, and on behalf of the entire City Commission, do hereby proclaim that February 23rd, 2022 be recognized as Peace Day in Dunedin and encourage all citizens to have peace be ever present in our words, our thoughts, and our actions. Great message.
Such a good one.
Thank you.
Got to say a few words.
Can we get a picture of both of them?
That would be good. That would be great.
One, two. One more for me. Perfect. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you from the three Rotary Clubs of Dunedin, which represents the Rotary Club of Dunedin, the Rotary Club North, and the Rotary Club Waterside. All three of these clubs came together to support this project to move forward. It's been going on for over a year to finally get to this place. But thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, the City of Dunedin, for supporting this project and recognizing it. I think the location of where the Peace Poll was put on the north side of the community center was just an excellent location, and it came out very well. It's a beautiful spot. It's quiet. Hopefully, some people will sit and reflect for those who recognize what the Peace Poll is all about. But I'd like to thank you again for the proclamation, and I hope you all can join us next Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Certainly, a great message, especially now with some of the divisiveness. So it's great. Thank you. Very good. Okay, we have citizen input. Now is the time to... For anyone wishing to come forward and speak to any item that is not already on the agenda, if it's on the agenda, you'll have the opportunity when the item comes forward. But if there are things that you want to express your feelings about otherwise, please feel free to come forward, give us your name and address for the record, and there's a clock above my head. Anyone? Any takers? Okay, come back to the Commission. Before we get started, I just want to let everybody know that we have at least three Commission discussion items, as well as a little bit of an update from our city manager and our city clerk. So I am going to try and wrangle this meeting to be completed by noon so that we have enough time to cover all of those things. Okay.
And you know I have a hard stop.
Yep, I do. All right, so we have the consent agenda, boards and committee appointments for the causeway, code enforcement, code compliance, Edgewater Drive, Hammock Library, and then we have the construction administration services for lift station at the wastewater treatment plant. Any items to be pulled?
No.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Hey, Commissioner Frainey and Vice Mayor Kynes, thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four to zero. We'll move on to our action items. We have Resolution 2206, First Quarter Budget Amendment. Nikki, can you read that resolution by title only?
Resolution 2206, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dunedin, Florida, amending the city's operating and capital budgets for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2021, and ending September 30, 2022, and providing for an effective date. This has been reading of Resolution 2206 by title only.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Frainey and Vice Mayor Kynes, thank you. Well, hello, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Les Tyler, Finance Director, and I'm here with Ashley Kimpton, Budget Manager. This item is Resolution 2206, is amending the fiscal year 2022 operating and capital budget. The total budget amendment in the staff report is an increase in appropriations of $23.9 million in various funds in fiscal year 22. The purpose of the carryforward budget amendment are to appropriate carryforward encumbrances and project budgets from fiscal year 21 into fiscal year 22. The outstanding encumbrances result when purchase orders have been created during the fiscal year, but the goods and services have not been invoiced or shipped by September 30 of 2021. At the end of the fiscal year, encumbrances and the funds that have been budgeted in the prior year are carried forward into the next fiscal year through a budget amendment. The encumbered items to be carried forward from '21 to '22 total $4,912,000. The detail list is in Attachment C in the staff report. And the other carryforward amounts are for project budgets that are not completed as of September 30 of 2021, and they total $19,030,000. The detail list of projects is in Attachment D in the staff report. The impact on each fund, each fund balance by fund is shown on Page 1 of the background section of the staff report in Attachment A. This shows the affected funds and the total impact of their respective fund balances. And also want to mention that all funds are meeting or exceeding their reserve level targets with the exception of the CRA fund. This is shown in Attachment E, and this is the last attachment and page in the staff report. The CRA estimated available fund balance at the end of 2022 is $5,294,000. That's under the reserve goal of 15%. But I want to mention that the CRA budget in 2022, when we adopted the budget, we knew it was going to be a fairly tight cash flow year, and the budget was actually adopted at it being $6,200,000. So we're not surprised by this, but staff will continue to monitor the CRA funds throughout 2022 to make sure we pay attention to the cash flow. That concludes the general comments and be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, questions for Les. Vice Mayor, any questions?
Oh, I forgot who I was.
How often does that happen? I'm just... I'm totally teasing.
Actually, no. I mean, I looked this over very carefully, and there's like $20 million is for penny water wastewater, which the penny is 10, that's for the building. Water wastewater is $7 million, and then stormwater is $3 million. So that's almost $20 million of the entire catalog. So I have no issues.
Any questions on this end?
Me? No, I mean Jennifer and I had our meeting, and I think I had all my questions answered. I'm good.
Okay, Commissioner.
I can say the same then, too, for brevity.
Okay. Anyone from the public wish to come forward and speak to this item? All right, we'll come back to the Commission. Any final comments from anyone?
Just say, I mean, there's no surprises here. This is all carryforward, and so these are things that we know about, so.
Okay, very good. Great job, and it was pretty condensed, I thought. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Tauranga.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kynes.
Aye.
Commissioner Frainey.
Aye.
Mayor Bajowski.
Aye, and that motion passes four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Good job. That's right. All right, then we have, I see, Robert on the line. We have the Mies Hospital Parking Lease Agreement. Bob.
Mayor Jeanie Garner will be doing the presentation this morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Jeanie Garner with Economic Development. We'll be bringing two leases forward this morning with Mies Hospital. One is for the Mies Materials site, and the other is for the Virginia-Milwaukee parking lot. The Virginia-Milwaukee parking lot is just an extension to that lease for another year and a half now, for October 2023. The Mies Materials lot is... We're looking to do a long-term lease. I'm trying to get the PowerPoint up here, pardon me. So this is the site, as you see, the Mies Materials site and then the Milwaukee-Virginia streets. The Mies Materials site, we're looking to do some improvements to expand the parking there. So the CRA is looking to make an investment there of nearly $200,000 to improve that site. So you'll see the deal structure here. So it'll add additional parking. Part of the project includes demo in the building, doing construction site work there, and paving and striping, and then doing some finishing work to make the property look attractive. So that will increase the parking stock there to 56 parking spaces, so what you needed parking down in the downtown area. The timeline for the project, you will see... Well, here's the parking site layout.
Jeanie, let me just... I'm sorry to interrupt. What we're seeing on the screen is Bob and not your...
Okay.
Not your...
Love you, Bob, but we read us.
Yeah, there we go. There we... No, we're good there. We have it back now. No, you had it. You were good. It's back where it should be.
Okay.
Well, now it isn't.
Oh, no, it's nice. Yeah, there it is.
There.
Are we good? Okay, there we go. So here's the site layout that we have proposed that will give us the 56 extra parking spaces. So as you see, it includes the demo of the building and then some of the site work, and then, of course, we'll make it very attractive when it's finished. The proposed timeline for the project is we immediately, we'd like to get structural engineering out there to make sure that the space is secure, and then they can finish the design work, then we'll move into the demolition this summer, the construction, paving, and striping, and we hope to have the project finished by October 2022 this year. So as I said, Bob Ironsmith is on the call, and Trevor Davis is also here to answer any questions you may have.
Okeydoke. Any questions on the lease agreement? No? No? Questions? Questions?
I did. I actually asked Jennifer about the clawback provision. She explained it.
I do have a question, and I did speak to Jennifer about this ahead of time. It's not relating to the lease, but it's the only time we'll have the chance to ask the question, so I didn't have a choice. So for anybody, I don't know who's going to answer it, but as you know, we've had some issues with closing our street to Milwaukee and not having access to the parking and to some of the buildings. And so we kind of talked about this in a previous meeting, if we might be able to create some back access to that. I don't know if it's a good idea or not, but I think we were talking about looking at that, so I didn't see it on this picture, which is why I'm asking.
Sure. Mayor, if I may, Chairman did speak to me. I've talked to Public Works Director Paul Stanek. We are doing a comprehension review of it. It is very challenging because of grade, drainage, and width there, but Paul is certainly aware, I know he's probably in the audience there, and we are taking a look at it.
Okay, he's sitting here, ready to talk.
Okay. Paul and I had a couple of talks in engineering, which I want to give some kudos to engineering for doing the design. So thank you, Russell and Patrick and Andy. They've been working very closely with us, and they're going to take a look at this, too. And it could be a situation where, obviously, it's private property. There would need to be an easement obtained, but the Boy Scouts have always, as you know, Mayor, been a good partner with us, and perhaps it's a different type of surface. So Public Works is going to take a close look at it, frankly, and that's where we are today.
Thank you, Bob. Paul, did you have anything you wanted to?
I pretty much think Bob has said it all. He is right with it being private property, and so we would have to work through that. And also, too, it seems like that parking lot is being used a lot for the staging for the different events, so we would have to look at, you know, how it's going to be used, when it's going to be used, those kind of things, so.
Yeah, and for me, I mean, I'm not so worried about it today. I'm worried about it, access to it in the future, because, you know, we have this whole east-end redevelopment plan, right? And, you know, eventually, there will likely be more active business turnover in this area, you know? And so access to that parking, when the gateway is built, it's likely we will want more closings all the way to Milwaukee in the future. I'm not talking about today. And so if that's going to kind of transition itself naturally, then I want to make sure we're thinking about it today while we're spending the money to do engineering and parking and all that, you know, access, so.
Absolutely, we'll look at that.
Can I just...
Sure.
So the access points now are, it's the Boy Scout property. What are the...
The access...
Because there are two ways to come into that, right? I mean, there's the off Main and...
Off Main and then off Loudon, right there. So that's the two access points. Off of Main is just that little front part of the parking, and then off of Loudon is the rest of the parking. We're obviously looking to take down the building, but we're going to end up, because of the elevation changes there, we're going to be leaving some of that as is, based on when we do the structural analysis of what's there and what we can use and stem walls and things. Once again, it's great having the elevation, but when you're trying to do a surface parking lot that's going to be ADA compatible, that makes it so much more difficult. So, and then along the backside, the Scottish-American Society between them and the Boy Scouts, there is kind of a little dirt road that goes from Milwaukee, and I won't want that path, I won't even call it a road, and I guess that is what we're speaking about, but it's unimproved. It provides access, I believe, for the homeowner that lives off of Loudon back in there.
Okay, so it's actually a private homes. Who owns it?
Well, yeah, it's either a single-family home or a duplex off Loudon that ends up getting closed off as well. But if you look at the different closures throughout the length of Main Street, there's a number of places that are affected in that same way.
So for me, I mean, I don't even know if it's a good idea.
Yeah.
I have no idea. I'm not saying it is or not. We haven't communicated with people over there, you know? We don't know, once gateway is built, whether there'll be all of a sudden this influx of traffic that gets stuck because they... You know, there's all kinds of things we have to consider, but I just want to make sure we're considering it all at the same time while we're spending money. I just feel like it's efficient.
Mayor, we'll take a close look at it with Public Works and engineering, and I just want to say just two things. Kudos to engineering for its design, but to be honest with you, a big thankful, thankful thank you to Bay Care. They always working with us. Anytime we call on them, they step up to the plate, and this is just another instance. And I'm very proud of the Scott Patrants that came down and the improvements that are there. It opened up the Scottish, it opened up everything in that area. So I think it was really a promising thing for Bay Care.
Okay, thank you. Anyone wish... Did I already do this part? Anyone wish to come forward and speak to this item? Very good? All right. Any final comments?
Yeah, I do. I mean, I think it's incumbent upon all of us to make sure we're, you know, reaching out and thanking our partner, Mies Hospital. I mean, pretty amazing, really, when you look at what they're willing to do. I know they won't sell the property. I fully understand that. That's been vetted, but really, to go into these kind of partnerships in different areas of their available parking at off times is a great partnership. I mean, they are a community hospital, but they don't have to do this, and it's great. We should thank them often, so.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you to Nikki Day for putting this stuff together for us, too. I appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor? Yes. I'd just like to say that we have a long history of public-private partnerships, and Bay Care has partnered with us before and has been an excellent partner, Mies. So again, public-private can really come in in a very interesting niche to get things accomplished when you couldn't otherwise. So again, we all thank them.
I'll go along with that, and I'll make the comment that this is actually, we're talking about two leases here, and the one is just incredible on Milwaukee and Virginia. And that's just been fantastic. They've been fantastic about that, as well as the overflow parking behind them. So they've been with us for a number of years now, probably six years on that. And so this is a good plan, a good program, and much needed, and so I'm in full support of it.
Thank you, as am I. I do need to take a motion to approve this.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, Vice Mayor and Commissioner Tauranga, thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Thank you. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you. Thank you to Jeanie for stepping up here, too. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jeanie. And Trevor.
Thank you, Paul.
And Trevor.
All right. Now we have the sub-agreement with FDEM and the City of Dunedin for Hazard Mitigation Grant Program for Lift Station Number 20.
And that was the shortcut.
That was what I was trying to do. I was trying to figure out, how do I shorten it and still say what I'm supposed to say? Go ahead, all you guys.
Russell, you got this.
Well, good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Russell Ferlita, Assistant Public Works Utilities Director and City Engineer. And here, I'm here to talk about the subrecipient agreement between the State of Florida Division of Emergency Management and the City of Dunedin for a HMGP grant for Lift Station 20 rehabilitation. So this program is a federally funded program. It's administered by the FDEM to assist local governments in implementation of funding following long-term measures for disaster mitigation. This particular project was funded from the HMGP grant released from Irma. The city submitted two separate projects, the Lift Station 32 Funding Grant and the Lift Station 20 Funding Grant. Lift Station 32 was previously approved, and we brought that to you previously, is currently awaiting transfer by FEMA from design to construction. And then this is the Lift Station 20 Grant. The funds for this project were budgeted in fiscal year 22 out of the Water Sewer Fund under project number 522002. By entering this subrecipient agreement, which has been reviewed by the city attorney, the city is eligible to be reimbursed for construction expenses in an amount up to $997,757.38 in total grant funding. The total project cost is estimated to be about $1.3 million, so it's about a 75% match, basically. Staff hereby recommends the execution of the subrecipient agreement with FDEM for the HMGP grant for Lift Station 20 rehab project as detailed previously. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay, any questions?
No. All good news.
Just a comment.
Yeah, just a comment.
Okay. Any input from the public? All right, can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Whatever.
Okay.
Whatever.
Commissioner Frainey and Vice Mayor Kynes, any final comments?
Well, I mean, it's all good news in the sense that, you know, we're receiving money and on something that's really important in terms of rebuilding and rehabbing, so thanks for all your work to make it happen, and yeah, let's go.
Very good.
I'd just like to comment that in the last two times, we've seen public-private partnerships and the power of grants. So those are two tools that have really, that really always work in our governmental structure, and I'm very appreciative of 75% grant from the Florida Department of Emergency Management.
Very good. Anything, Commissioner?
No, so I appreciate the entire project here, both of them, and again, I love the grants. So when it's available, it's made available for people and for organizations like us that suffer something, and we did, and so staff has followed up on it, so it was fantastic. Great job.
Very good. Thank you, gentlemen. Great job. Really appreciate it. I know Jennifer's happy and proud. You can look at the pride on her face over there. I can see.
I'm Russell Ferlita, Assistant Public Works and Utilities Director and City Engineer. And here, I'm here to talk about the sub-recipient agreement between the State of Florida Division of Emergency Management and the City of Dunedin for a HMGP grant for Lift Station 20 rehabilitation. So this program is a federally funded program. It's administered by the FDEM to assist local governments in implementation of funding following long-term measures for disaster mitigation. This particular project was funded from the HMGP grant released from Irma. The city submitted two separate projects, the Lift Station 32 Funding Grant and the Lift Station 20 Funding Grant. Lift Station 32 was previously approved, and we brought that to you previously, is currently awaiting transfer by FEMA from design to construction. And then this is the Lift Station 20 Grant. The funds for this project were budgeted in fiscal year '22 out of the Water Sewer Fund under Project Number 522002. By entering this sub-recipient agreement, which has been reviewed by the city attorney, the city is eligible to be reimbursed for construction expenses in an amount up to $997,757.38 in total grant funding. The total project cost is estimated to be about $1.3 million. So it's about a 75% match, basically. Staff hereby recommends the execution of the sub-recipient agreement with FDEM for the HMGP grant for Lift Station 20 rehab project as detailed previously. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay, any questions?
No. All good news.
Just a comment.
Yeah, just a comment.
Any, any input from the public? All right, can I have a motion to approve?
動了
Whatever.
Okay.
Whatever.
Commissioner Franny and Vice Mayor Kynes, any final comments?
Well, I mean, it's all good news, in the sense that, you know, we're receiving money and on something that's really important in terms of rebuilding and rehabbing. So thanks for all your work to make it happen. And, yeah, let's go.
Very good.
I'd just like to comment that in the last two times, we've seen public-private partnerships and the power of grants. So those are two tools that have really, that really always work in our governmental structure. And I'm very appreciative of 75% grant from the Florida Department of Emergency Management.
Very good. Anything, Commissioner?
No, so I appreciate the entire project here, both of them. And again, I love the grants. So when it's available, it's made available for people and for organizations like us that suffer something, and we did. And so, staff has followed up on it, so it was fantastic. Great job.
Very good. Thank you, gentlemen. Great job. Really appreciate it. I know Jennifer's happy and proud. You can look at the pride on her face over there. I can see.
She's been brilliant, too.
There you go. All right.
If I could say, if we keep being so brief and brilliant, Jeff is going to look like the guy that's...
It's all his fault.
It's all his fault. No.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And then we have the addendum to the city manager's employment agreement. Are we communicating with both of you ladies this morning, or how are we doing this?
Teresa Smalling, do the present.
Gotcha.
Bring the item, and then we're just getting your Labor and Employment Council, David Miller, will be on the line as well, in case the commission has any questions.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission. Teresa Smalling, Director of HR and Risk Management for the city. I bring before you an amendment, proposed amendment to Jennifer's employment agreement. You may remember, on June 26, 2017, the commission selected Jennifer as the Dunedin City Manager. And her negotiated employment agreement, which is in the packet, at the time, awarded her lump sum of her annual leave on her anniversary date, which is August 28. The agreement also stated that she would be under the same rules and policies as general employees. And in the Employee ESSR, or the Employee Service System Rules, it basically says that no employee shall carry more than 200 hours over to the next fiscal year. So this created a problem for Jennifer. As you know, she's very dedicated. She doesn't always get to use those 200 hours throughout the course of the year. So she would have a remnant left, and then on August 28, she would then have that extra 200, which would then put her losing hours each year. With this in mind, she and I met with our city attorney, Nikki Day, and her law partner, David Miller, who is board certified in the Florida Bar in Labor and Employment Law. And after talking with them and kind of laying out the issues, David came up with the language that you now see in the addendum. Basically, it says that effective September 30 of 2021, we are recommending that the contract, her employment agreement, be amended to allow her to carry over a maximum of 200 hours of annual leave each fiscal year, consistent with city employees. And we're also recommending that her anniversary, her date that she receives her annual leave be moved to October 1 of each year. So therefore, we won't run into that issue of her having, you know, almost 400 hours in any one moment. So her accruals would be capped at 400 hours. Should she leave employment with the city, the most that she would be able to, eligible annual hours that she would be paid out would be 200 hours. So at this time, David is here, Nikki's here, and I am here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay.
We did get David up on your big screen, David, so now everyone can sort of see you. You're this floating head in the sky.
Welcome, David. Jennifer, did you have anything to add?
No, I don't, Mayor.
Okay. All right, questions for any of the above?
Yes, I do. So she has the cap of 400, but only 200 hours can be carried over per year.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Question?
No, I mean, I get it. I mean, you get a new pot by contract on October 1. On, no, you get it on September 30, and then October 1, you can't have more than 200. So I get it. It's a, I think it's a flaw in the contract. I read it thoroughly, and it seems to take care of it. Makes sense. I think it's reasonable. You'll never get paid off for more than 200. So that kind of clears that up. So I think this is a good solution.
Unless we just don't want her here in the month of September.
Good negotiation, though, I will say. When I read the...
We're adopting a budget in September, but...
Commissioner, Torga, any questions?
I feel like this is congruent with the employees, so I didn't have, I didn't have any issues about it, after having read it thoroughly and discussing it as well with Jennifer.
Any public comment on this?
Aside from me, appreciating her being here in September.
Yes, right.
Yeah, it was a good point.
Us, too. Okay, can I have a motion to approve?
動了
Second. Okay, Commissioner Franny and Vice Mayor Kynes, any final comments?
No.
From anybody? Happy to assist.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Very much appreciate it.
Thank you, Teresa. All right, all in favor, signify by, what? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four to zero.
Bye, thank you, David.
Thank you, David.
Thanks, David. Where am I at? Okay. All right, proposed agenda for our March 8 meeting. We have a couple of consent items. One of the consent items is the PSTA redeployment of the autonomous vehicle. And I'd like to pull that off of consent.
I agree.
Because I think we're going to, and I think we need to ask PSTA to do a presentation on what the issues had been, because if we don't, everybody's going to be asking.
Correct.
And we've determined it's their story to tell, but they need to actually tell it.
Very good, Mayor.
So we'll put that under action items. And then everything else, to me, I mean, we don't have any workshop items or informational items, and some of these are going to be the longer, you know, the furniture for City Hall might be a discussion. The FCT grant agreement for Gladys Douglas will definitely be a discussion, so, but I think it'll be okay. So everybody okay with that adjustment?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Okeydoke. Can I have a motion to approve with that change?
動了
Second.
Okay, Vice Mayor and Commissioner Torga, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Thank you. Okay, so now we have the Dunedin Energy Report, which we kind of put into our staff and Commissioner Franny's hands to work on, on our behalf. So I'll look to Commissioner Franny if you have any opening remarks that you want to make before we have the presentation.
Yeah, I do. Actually, thank you all from Duke for being here. Back, I think, in, you had it as May 2021, I didn't remember, but obviously, this has been an ongoing issue since some of the storms that we had over the years and some issues that we'd had with Duke Energy. You know, I obviously felt like, I know I was a little irritating about some of the past reports that had been done when I was actually a staff person back in the early 2000s. But anyway, I appreciated that the commission let me kind of take the ball with staff, and Jorge's been awesome, and just kind of tried to get the kind of report I thought the commission should get. And I, and really, I'm very happy about it. I know that Chris particularly, he's repeated my words. I didn't want a dog and pony show. I wanted something that's personalized for Dunedin. And I think that that's been something that personally I've actually never seen from any of the energy companies. But I'm happy to say that I think we really got that, and we're going to hear that today. Obviously, you all will have your own questions. You know, they may be, you know, some very pointed questions that we want to ask Duke, but I will say, from my perspective, they've worked hard to try to personalize this, and so I look forward for you all to hear it and be able to ask some questions. I know that from the staff side, Jorge, Keith, and Will, I think, have been our main players and did an awesome job on that side. Chris has been the main player, as well as Mike and Jeff, but Chris has been kind of our lead contact. And actually, I say that Chris has been the guy that kind of got it, you know, like how to make it more personalized. So we, I'm going to let Jorge, if you want to say a couple of words. I know we also have our franchise agreement ending in July, and there may be some things that we want to push that's important to us today, so, but Jorge.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Commissioner Franny, you know, hit the nail on the head as far as the presentation this morning. As she mentioned, we've been working with Duke. We've had multiple meetings since May of last year, when the commission directed staff to coordinate with Commissioner Franny, obviously, you know, given her past experience on the staff side during the previous negotiations related to the past franchise agreement renewal at that time with Florida Power slash Progress Energy. So as I mentioned, since May of 2021, we've met with Chris and Jeff and Mike and several others from Duke on a regular basis to try to address the concerns that were raised during some previously commissioned city reports that were conducted back in 2001 and 2003. You know, that's part of your agenda packet, the more detailed report that addressed those concerns. But with respect to the reason they're here today is obviously to report back, to answer those questions that perhaps were not addressed previously, which led to these ongoing meetings. Obviously, the intent is to get the commission comfortable with the efforts and the improvements that they've made thus far and have programmed going forward as we continue to negotiate between now and July before the next franchise agreement renewal. It will expire in July of this year, so we will be bringing that back. We've actually received the draft of that franchise agreement from Duke. Chris Rowe, who I believe is online via Zoom, is listening in. I've been working with him on some edits and comments and questions that I had, based on the draft that was provided by Duke. He's gone through those and addressed those. He's listening in today to see if the commission has any additional concerns or comments that might be incorporated in any ongoing edits that he'll be coordinating through Chris and Duke's attorney before we actually bring that to the commission. It'll be an ordinance, so therefore, there'll be two readings. But with that, I'll turn it over to Chris, and he can provide the update as to the efforts that Duke's been conducting ever since.
All right, thank you, Jorge. Actually, I'm going to have our Community Relations Manager, Jeff Baker, he'll get the presentation started, and we'll introduce a few of our folks along the way.
Okay. Welcome.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. And Commissioner Torga, I believe we've met before, so welcome to the commission. It's good to see all of you again. Commissioner Franny, you took half of my notes, so I guess I'll say, the only thing, you know, it's been a pleasure working with Commissioner Franny and the staff to get to this point. I know this has been a frustrating issue for all of you, and obviously, with the onset of COVID, that certainly created some challenges as well. It kept us from meeting and pursing it for some, for a certain period of time. But today, we have a group of Duke Energy employees here. Chris Teedig, that Commissioner Franny has talked about, is in the Government Community Relations Group as well, but he oversees our right-of-way agreements across the state. He's going to be our main presenter. And then we're also going to have Bob McCabe, who is our manager of planning, talk to you today. In addition, we have A.J. Mill with our street lighting group, in case you have questions about street lighting. Mike Malley, who is the city's account executive, is here as well. And then Litten Williams, who is our manager over protections, is here. So if there's any questions that are not specifically related to the report, we're certainly prepared to answer those to the best of our ability as well. So good to see you all.
Thank you.
And I was just going to say, you were talking about Jeff, if, you know, my hair over COVID has gotten a little closer to his, and same name, so if you need to jump in, I'm here for you.
You are more than welcome to present from your chair there. You don't have to get up if you don't want to.
Well, I'm sorry, we'll see if I'm too tall for the microphone.
Okay.
Sometimes that happens. Just to give an idea of what this presentation will be providing, so we're going to go through the report, plus a few other things. The main point, obviously, is grid improvements. That's, that was the main theme that we've heard and listened to. And so the main part of that report that we provided, along with your staff, really focused on that. So let me start with a bit of what Commissioner Franny talked about, is how we got here. So upon her request and along with working with Jorge, we've been addressing a lot of those old issues that really started from the 2001 and later supplemented the 2003 reports. And there's certainly a common thread in reading those old reports that the city commissioned back then, and that was a lot of concerns relating to the reliability, the condition of our system. So what did we do back then to address those issues that were raised, and what are we doing now? And of course, what are we going to do in the future? So we really took a four-pronged approach in that detailed report. So we wanted to specifically address several items in those old reports. And then, that's fine, because that really addresses the past, but really looking at what did we do since Hurricane Irma? We know that's a pain point. So starting at Hurricane Irma, what do we do with grid improvements within, really the recent history, what recent projects were completed? And what are we doing now and in the future? So that grid improvement section really focuses on that. I do realize there's a lot of technical language in there. We try to kind of take as much of that out as possible and show on a map and where things happened, where did we do some of those projects. There's a lot of different types of projects, too, and we can go through that in this presentation. Bob will really do a good job of laying that out for you. The third thing was the sustainable energy, and we know that's really the future. So EV charging, the city's already done a good job taking advantage of that through a program that was released through Duke two years ago. Also, the clean energy connection, which is solar. So Jeff will come back and touch a little bit more on that. The appendix, if there's a boring part of the report, that's it. So that's the kind of the long verbiage that if you need to sleep, you could go ahead and read through the appendix. That gives you a lot of the standard boilerplate language of a lot of what our programs do. But first, I'm going to go ahead and talk a little bit about those, what we call the 2001, the 2003 reports. So some of the common threads in there, there are several issues that talked about the materials we use, the condition of our wires, our transformers. What is Duke doing, or really, what did our predecessor do at the time to inspect those, to change those out? What kind of program we have in place? So going through that, I mean, I could personally say it was a bit of a humbling experience hearing the feedback from Commissioner and Jorge, Paul, Keith. They really challenged us through this whole process from May all the way through December. There was a lot of collaborative back and forth on tough questions that they asked of us, certainly didn't make it easy. So we had to do a lot of digging to find out, what did we do back then? What was really the state of our grid back then? It was really hard to get real good answers, so we did as best we could. But it was easier for us to answer, what are we doing now about it? What is our transformer inspection process now? What types of poles are we putting in? What are we doing with our copper wire versus our aluminum wire? What type of feeds do we have to ensure reliability within the city? So I'm not going to go into all that detail right now, so again, that's all in the report. But again, the common thread of that was the reliability concerns within the city. What's going on, and what are we doing about it? So a big thing is the self-healing projects, which Bob will talk about later, and that's part of our new program. It's often called Smart Grid. So you'll kind of hear some of those terms used interchangeably. But there's a lot of things that are going on that Duke has. It's statewide programs, but they've already kicked off here early on in this city to really improve reliability. So hopefully, you've seen some improvements since Hurricane Irma. We've heard that loud and clear that we need to do better. So a lot of our interaction through street lighting, vegetation management especially, we feel like there's a good collaboration going on right now, where we're, have a two-way communication going on with city staff of trimming trees, getting lights replaced, converting to LED, so things like that. So I'm going to go ahead and get some things started off with grid improvements. So a big one, it's kind of something I know you all don't see because it's inside the fence of our substation, but our Dunedin substation, we did a very large project there. Most of that work finished in 2020. And for the most part, we rebuilt just about everything inside the substation. We replaced most of the equipment. We did some environmental improvements. We added some animal control devices, so, believe it or not, so animals are often one of the largest causes of outages inside substations. That's raccoons, squirrels, climbing on top of the equipment. So we've had a really... So we've had to really take a concerted effort to add animal control devices on there. That project was around ten million dollars, and we didn't put dollar figures in the report on purpose. It's can be kind of a misleading thing, and I'm comfortable telling you that that project was roughly ten million dollars because it was really a very extensive project. But when you compare this substation project to another one, that's why it's kind of a not the easiest thing to compare apples to apples. It's hard to find one substation that's just like another one when we do a rebuild project. But same with all of our other rebuild projects of our lines, just wanted to kind of give you that kind of the forethought of why didn't we put dollars throughout that report? It's it's really hard to come up with accurate numbers that truly reflect the scope of the work. But that project really was something that was, it took several years to complete. We did do some final wrap-ups early on in two thousand twenty-one, but it was a a very big project, and you'll hear Bob talk about the other substation that's in the city is our Highland Substation. We've got a big project planned for that one in two thousand twenty-five, so you'll see we do have a focus on some reliability at the substation level. And there was another transmission line that was fully rebuilt as well. You'll see in the report, our old our old transmission poles were made out of wood. We haven't used a wood pole in twenty years. So getting all that rebuilt and replaced with concrete, or mainly steel is what we're using, that's certainly a a good thing to hold up against the storms. I'm gonna go ahead and turn things over to to Bob McCabe. He's gonna walk through the smart meters. Well, we have a couple of videos to play along with this presentation that we don't have to listen to us the entire time, might add a little bit more color to to what's happening.
I'll do this, Bob. Yeah, I'll let you do that.
Welcome.
That way I only concentrate on things I'm looking at. Again, I'm Bob McCabe. I'm a I'm a manager of our planning and also our filing initiatives that we do with the state. So I thought I'd take a moment here to talk with you all about some of the things that we've done and the things that we plan to do in the future relative to the grid. And by the way, personal note, I was happy to see Bob Ironsmith. I worked with him many years back in the early two thousands, late nineties. Amazing guy. I gotta say that, just personal opinion, so back task at hand here. So we have smart meters over here, and that is something I'm very proud of that Duke Energy has done, and it's it gives the customers a whole lot more control over what they can, their usage. They can see what they're using on a real-time basis. I think that's pretty impressive. You can do it from the comfort of your computer rather than have to walk out the meter and take a little note. So I I'm very proud of that. And in addition, the smart meters give it the option for changes in bill due dates. That's something that I think a lot of customers had looked for in the past. Sometimes, you know, you're, we tell you, your bill due date was based upon when we read the meter, and there's nothing we can do about it. That's what it is. That works for some people, but not for everyone. So with smart meters, we're able to actually work with our customers on a date that's convenient for them, so very happy to see that. We also have some other potentials that you'll see in the video, some outage management stuff that will be coming down the line. It's not quite there yet, but there's some software additions that will be coming so that it will be able to self-report outages. So that's that's a coming feature. So with that, I think it'd be a good time to go ahead and play the video.
Just a moment, pull it up. Figure out how to reshare the screen here.
That can't be right. You were just trying to share it? Is that what?
Yeah.
Smart meters improve your energy experience. What's the difference between a smart meter and a regular digital meter? Simply put, two-way communication between your home and your energy provider. Smart meters allow you to see how much energy you use, when you use it, and its cost. You can use this information to monitor and potentially reduce energy use to save money. In a major outage, smart meters let us know who has power and who's without, so we can send crews where they're needed. More control over energy usage, increased efficiency, and quicker outage response are just some of the benefits of smart meters and a smart grid. We're working hard to build a smarter energy future.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Like I mentioned, yeah, the outage feature's coming. It's a software integration before we make that fully implemented, but everything else is already online with it. And another thing that customers like is we don't have to go hanging out in their backyard or having to access property quite as much as maybe we had in the past unless there's an actual issue on property. So that's another exciting feature. Next thing we're looking at is our some grid improvements that we have done in the past. And one of the ones that I had looked at that was pretty impressive was the, well, Chris already talked some about the substation upgrades. By by the way, is everybody familiar with transmission lines, what that means in substation? Transmission lines bring the power from our power plants, long corridors over into the different locations, the substations. The substations then take that high voltage line and convert it down into what we call a primary voltage. It's about thirteen thousand volts. We have a term that we call feeders. Those come out of the substation and they go out into along usually the main corridors like Main Street, Pinehurst and all that, out into the areas to serve the customers. And those main lines, those feeder lines, then have branch lines or what we call lateral lines that come off of these feeders, and those go into the neighborhoods or to the businesses to serve them. So I I figured I should lay that out because I'm not, I don't want to assume that everybody knows what our terminology is. So the big ones are transmission lines, substation, then feeder, then lateral, lateral lines or branch lines.
I was gonna say, there's like a really great diagram on the last page of the report. If anybody's really into it, really excited about it. I I found it kindergarten, which is what I need, so it helps me to understand. So just adding that.
It does. It makes a big difference. I mean, let's face it, it seems like to me, oh, yeah, of course, but to anybody else, you know, you see the thing up there on the pole and you're, I don't know what that is. So I thought I'd just take a moment to make sure everybody's aware of that. So Chris had already gone over some of the substation upgrades that we had done, and so I think we're pretty good there unless anybody had any questions on that. Then we move into some of the feeder upgrades that we have done, and one of the
Oh, I had a quick question, if I could. We said twelve thousand customers, twelve thousand five hundred customers out of the Dunedin Substation.
Yes.
Does that mean those that come off of that last shot of of the mines? In other words, there's 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 twelve hundred and five, twelve thousand five hundred that are fed off that Dunedin Substation?
Out of that substation. So what that means is out of that, all those feeder lines come out, then all the lateral lines come out, then all the services, the very, when you add all those up and bring it back up to the peak, it's the twelve thousand.
The lateral lines are hitting twelve thousand five hundred.
All, yeah, by the, right, from the, like a Christmas tree, if you can imagine.
How many customers do you have in Dunedin?
That's a good question.
About twenty-three thousand.
Twenty-three thousand.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The the this map up here is actually a good picture of what our substations serve. So green is what's served by the Dunedin Substation, and the pink at the bottom, served by our Highland Substation. So we have a couple, and then a couple other substations outside the city limits serving that that kind of northeast edge. So that's what those, that color coding means.
Does that answer the question you're looking? Oh, absolutely. Thank you. Now, so looking at one of the ones that I was very impressed with was our sub aqua cable upgrade. We actually redid our sub aqua cable running from mainland, I guess, out toward the honeymoon Island State Park. So that's a pretty big deal there. It's not an inexpensive project. Unfortunately, I don't know how much it was, but I knew do know that we installed some new line out that way and provide some redundancy out there so that going forward, in the event of issues, we're able to take care of it. And it being underground, you're not going to see any lines, you know, in the water or along the causeway that would that would be carrying that power. I think that's good for storm perspective also. So we've also done some of our additional upgrades for, like out by the high school, we had done some find and fix work where we actually went through the entire feeders and we looked for opportunities to fix and repair. I know that I believe there was some bamboo and some palm tree issues that were that we had to take care of, that were growing up into the lines. So we all know bamboo can cause some pretty quick damage. It grows very fast and spreads everywhere. So we were able to mitigate that by working with individuals who maybe had that on their property and resolve that and improve, result in some improvements for the high school. One of the things that we do when we fix or review our feeders and look to see what we can do to fix them, we will patrol the entire feeder. We look for things that are potentially broken. There are some reliability things on there, like some arrestors. What that is, is like lightning. If it hits a line, the arrester will stop it from progressing any further down into a home or into a business. So what we did is we look at all these arrestors to make sure that they're all still in good shape. Another thing we look at is our grounding. So we do have grounding all at at all this equipment locations and in some every every about every quarter mile, if there's not any equipment. What that does is if a light, if lightning or there's a surge that hits a line, it will take that to ground, so that will help protect the equipment. So we verified our grounding was good. We verified our arrestors were good. We also looked at our insulators on our poles. We validated that all of our insulators were, you know, in good shape, that that's what keeps the pole or keeps the wire away from the pole. If you have a bad insulator, you can have some tracking that would run across the insulator and cause some issues, some power quality issues. So we did look on that. Just wanted to give you some background as to some of the things that we look for. And I believe that we had also done some work patrolling a line that was for the Blue Jays. So we we spent some time looking to see what we can do to make sure that they are also receiving some quality power out there, too.
That was also tied to some repetitive issues that we were having at the library adjacent to them.
Exactly. I believe that was on the same feeder at the library and the, exactly. So that's what we did to to help mitigate that.
You know, Bob, can I just say, too, like, the whole point, it was tough to get maps because they can only do so much detail. So this looks kind of interesting, but it's hard, you know, because what we really wanted was real things that were problems and real things that got fixed and some sense of customer impact. And and so this kind of was the way to kind of pull it together. I just wanted to give a little bit of background.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Sometimes the map, it's like, it was hard. We went back and forth about what maps can really show it and what maps can they actually show, because they do have legitimate issues with not showing too much detail. So go ahead.
No, that's perfect. Exactly.
I have a real quick question. So I talked with the the city manager about this real quick, so just for clarification. So we list a number of customers here, but in in actuality, you had checked the whole system for all of the customers.
That's right.
I'm not sure why this would, just just help me why this.
Oh, I see. Well, there's different things you can look at. So we look at the main lines, and those impact all the customers on those lines. So if there's an issue on that on that feeder line, it will impact all the customers downstream from there. So by taking care of those larger, the issues on the larger lines, you're mitigating some of them that could affect many, many thousands of customers.
These were just the lateral ones that were having a
Now, right. We also, and and that's also some of the things that we had done, too. We recognized that there were some laterals that would, going through neighborhoods, that needed some looking at, too, and we did. And those, we did those targeted. Rather than look at every single lateral line, we looked where there were some reliability and outage issues, and we spent some time looking to see what those were. We looked to see, you know, if there was any vegetation or animal issues that we needed to to take care of. I think Chris had already mentioned before, in the substation, we put up some animal mitigation. We've done that, too, in on the feeders and in the laterals. In fact, I believe one of the things that we had done was put up a dish for an osprey nest, too. It it had a habit of wanting to nest on our poles. They look pretty fantastic, especially when you have some nice equipment up there. It's like, I can live here forever. So this gives an opportunity for the us to give them a better place rather than, you know, our our equipment to nest. So we are pretty proud of what we've done for, as a side note, for our avian protection. That is something that we have brought in in the last fifteen years or so, an extensive avian mitigation program, where we actually have it laid out in our GIS system. We lay out where all the areas are where there's bird concentration, and then we have areas that we, when we build new lines or we made it or or redo lines, that we actually put prevention on the poles. So you may actually see that in places throughout the city. You'll look at the top of the pole and you're like, oh, that pole has like this black cap looking thing on it. Looks like a little triangle. What's that for? That's to keep raptors, some of the larger birds, from sitting on top of the pole. They have larger wingspans, so there's a potential where they could be the path to ground, the larger birds can. So by us putting that mitigation on these poles, we discourage them from using that as their resting spot. That's our our primary focus when we do that. We can also add some other equipment on our things to prevent birds that, or squirrels or any other animals that sit on our equipment, from being that potential path to ground. That's our our biggest thing. By path to ground, that means that it's kind of like if you put your finger in a socket or something like that, you become the path from where the power is to the earth. So our goal is to make it so that doesn't happen to an animal. So we do what we can there, and and we have come a long ways over the last fifteen years or so in improving our our mitigation there, and that does help in outages, too. I know that's a little bit off topic here, but I wanted to make sure that I included that, because it is some of the stuff that we do, too. Next thing we have on here, unless there's any other questions on the feeders, I'll mention the Target Underground projects we've done.
Go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, so what we've done for Target Underground is neighborhoods that has some outage issues and/or tree vegetation issues, we've taken moments to see what we can do to mitigate that. A lot of times, the lines will be what we call back lot or rear lot. That means they're behind the home instead of in front of the home, which was great from aesthetic purpose. That's how things were done all through the forties, fifties, sixties, oh, keep them out of sight. Yeah, there's a lot of problems with that when it comes to the vegetation. People want their trees in the backyard. They want to have their privacy in their backyard, and those two things just don't go together, having the power lines back there, having easements back there and all that. So by us being able to move those back from the back to the front and putting them underground, we're able to reduce that potential for outage, and that's what this does. There's instances where we look for that, those heavily treat areas and those areas where there are a lot of outages, and we use as an opportunity to put the lines underground in the front of the homes instead of the rear. And this way, we don't need to go in their backyard to maintain anything. Everything is in the front. We did this at no cost to the customers. They had overhead lines that, you know, came over to their home, not a problem. We developed a conversion kit so that we could put this on the side of the home and come underground up and tap into the existing meter cans and stuff that were there without having to make the customer go to an expense of redoing their electrical system, which some of the homes are are older and they may not, it could be an expensive thing for them to have to go and redo their electrical to bring it up to the very latest. This this way, we didn't need to put any undue burden on the city customer or on the city residents, so.
I have a question on that.
Sure.
I'm gonna look at Jennifer Jorge. We had the issue over by the that neighborhood by the Fenway where where they were going to underground, and something happened, and, I mean, we were helping to pay part of that, and then it became too expensive. So can you just remind me of what, remind us what the those details were? Because I think we had to abandon it, didn't we?
Well, do move forward with the undergrounding.
I'm sorry, what?
Do move forward with the undergrounding, and the problem was that the easements, most of the property owners, some of the property owners wouldn't dedicate the easements for the remainder of the infrastructure, and so we didn't underground cable and those types of things.
That is a challenge. We do run across that, because we have to have a place to, you've already mentioned in a couple of your previous discussions, when you work with the private landowners like the Boy Scouts, you need an easement or right to be there in order for you to to be able to proceed.
Duke was in the right of way in an easement already, right?
A lot of times, in the back, like, all of our stuff is in an existing easement. And, you know, actually, we would have been able to abandon some of that easement if there wasn't any telecom or anybody else back there.
Right.
But as far as we're concerned, once we move to the front, we personally don't need the easement anymore. But some residents feel that when you ask them for an easement, that they should gain something for that right for you to put the equipment there. And unfortunately, we're just not in a position where we can lay out, have a cash layout to pay for easements. So what we do is we do the best we can to work with all the Um, so, what we do is we do the best we can to work with all the residents in the area when we do these kind of projects. We look for places that are less conspicuous. We try to put them on lot lines. We try to put them in places that are not in the way of existing vegetation or trees. Um, we do, we actually have community outreach where we have people go visit all these landowners and ask them, hey, this is where we're looking to put this. We're looking to run underground from here over to there. Any questions on that? Are you good with that?
So, so, how do, when you continue on doing these things, because we want you to do that.
Right.
It's important. How do we get all the other, um, utilities to buy into it, too? How do we coordinate that?
Um, I can respond, I guess, with respect to the City Hall project. Um, there was a particular challenge there and, uh, there was a need for an easement for the transformer and, um, along Loudon, um, just north of Virginia. We were unable to obtain that. So, we, we made some alterations at that location. We went, uh, replaced the pole. We, we paid Duke to replace the pole and, uh, essentially go underground from that point southward and, and, uh, obviously continued on with the rest of the project. But there are challenges when the resident or the business owner does not want to cooperate and does not want to provide easement. And I think that's what he was speaking to, is they're not in a position to be paying for easements. But, um, in the, in the case of the City Hall project, we worked with the other utility providers, Spectrum, uh, Frontier, um, and, and all the other, um, providers that basically are on their poles. And we, uh, we actually paid not only Duke to underground associated with that project, but we paid those utility providers to go underground as well.
But that's different than this. That, that was our own project. I'm talking about when, when Duke is.
Working with neighbors.
Yeah, working a neighborhood. Who coordinates? Does that end up falling on us?
Um, for the most part, we let our joint users know that we're going to be doing that kind of work. And we'll ask them, you know, if, if you want to do something, we can work with you. But the majority of them choose not to.
It's Duke. Yeah.
Yeah.
But I'm just, but it's Duke, you're the, you are the entity. But see, that's.
Yeah.
That's, I guess what I'd want to say is, um, you know, if you're going to make that move, it's, it really does serve your best interest to get them to cooperate because then you can, you are giving the customer something. By removing the back easement, you're just switching. And you can get those people to participate more if you can accomplish that. I, it's, I, I'm imagining a phone call to Verizon, hey, can I, I'm going to move this. Yeah, we don't need, we don't need to invest that. Well, somehow we need to try harder, is my point.
We did do that.
No, I know you did.
Right. And, and so, and, you know, it was problematic because they, obviously, they're not going to do it, you know, gratis. And so, and that was the problem. And we couldn't get the easements that we needed either from the property owners. So, it was a kind of a double-edged sword there.
Was that the issue, though? If you had everybody on board, it could have been a swap and that might have made it more.
Palatable.
Yeah, palatable to the homeowner.
That's my point.
Or, because then they're like, oh, I'm doing two easements. Was that, was that really at the heart of it? Or was it just, don't, don't change anything on me. You're trying to steal my land.
That's sometimes what it can be. Um, you know, we run, it's a number of things. And we are looking at some different ways of mitigating some of that going forward, the easements. Um, some going forward, what we're, a potential solution we're looking at is being able to use some of the city right of way for placement of our assets rather than requesting dedicated easement. Obviously, we have to make sure that the city's on board with that because, um, once our facilities are there, if we need to relocate them, then that would be to city expense. And the city may or may not want that. Um, so, that would be part of the discussion.
You know, not to get into the weeds here, but.
Yeah.
I'm sure if you have poles, okay, and you have other utilities attached to those poles, couldn't, again, I'm not trying to tell you how to run your business, but if they want to hook up to your poles, then they have to participate in the movement of them. I mean, I'm just saying.
I.
Mayor would be up in all that.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
You'll have to come to a microphone.
Yeah, I, I'll use the Dunedin example as the, as probably the most coordinated example that has happened. And, and you see that we did not achieve that because the other utility providers have no obligation to do that.
Saying, but if they, if they want to.
We can turn over ownership. If they do not want to come off the pole, we can turn over ownership of that pole to them, but we cannot force them off of the pole.
But that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm saying when you have an agreement with them, they have to ask permission to attach to your pole.
Right, but I'm saying that, that would be, that's statewide.
I understand. I'm just giving you a suggestion.
Okay.
Because, I mean, it would, it's, if we're really trying to improve the reliability and underground, because it's all about undergrounding here. And we know it and we want it and everybody else does, too. But if you're really trying to get there, then you can't let other utilities hold you back. Again, I'm not trying to tell you how to run your business, but if the end goal is to get that undergrounding and that is a main stop gap, you guys got to fix that.
Well, even, even when all the utility is on board, you still have the private landowner who will not.
No, I understand, but I do think.
Well, that was my question. Is it the private landowner in the end or is it more that the other utilities?
I think in this particular case, it was both. But I'll give you an example, Indian Shores, for example. That entire town undergrounded probably 10 years ago.
I know.
But you still have private, I mean, we still have, I think it's three locations. We're literally at the lot line, we had to put a pole on each side of that lot line, bring the utilities up, come down for those three residents because they would not give us a private.
That's, that's three locations.
It is, but that's like the metering issue.
But that's what I'm saying, but it just.
Won't do the smart metering. So, we have like, you know, old-fashioned meter guys.
I do think what you said makes a lot of sense. And that is when you're swapping versus increasing the easement, I think some of that kickback is going to go away. But you got to get to that point. And so, I mean, as you know, government has red tape all over the place. And I see this as one big red tape, you know, as to getting closer to undergrounding, which is the ultimate goal. However you can do that, I think we need. Anyway, I wasn't trying to take us off track, but, but I was so disappointed that this project didn't work out and, and, and that the other utilities were holding us hostage for doing that. And that was very upsetting to me.
Mayor, if I could, I think Chris.
Those people are still going to have power, you know? So, that's, I'll tell you, I'd write an easement in a minute I'd sign off. And my question is, I'm right around the 156 and I'm really thrilled that they had that opportunity. If some of them chose not to take it, you know, I can't do anything about that. My question, because when you started it, you said that you would have a program to broaden the expanse of that. So, how's that working? Because I think my neighbor undergrounded and y'all's people came over and said, well, we could also do you. And I said, how much? You know? I, I'm just curious because that was one of the things you said. You said, we're going to start here and then we'll carry it because we're all coastal. And so, I'd like that. I would ask you to ask, uh, answer that. And then also, I really want to know, how smart are the smart meters? Are they Mensa? Because what I want to know is that they ping immediately and someone's going to be out and fixing my line. Because I, um, I mean, eight days without any power and I'm right in that area. You know, I was, you know, I hate to say this, but I was running down the street trying to find y'all, Duke, and saying, look, just go ahead and, you know, bakeract me, but I want to get out of this heat. You're either going to get to my house or you call right now and take me somewhere where it's cool. I mean, that's how horrible it is, that humidity after any storm. And for eight days, it is, it's Dante's Inferno. And it's along that coast, you're going to continue. So, how are you going to broaden that effect? And I hope that this smart thing is really smart. IQ, Mensa, it's going to do the job. And I understand two-way communication. I'm talking about when you have an outage, because we always do. How quick do you know it and how do you respond to that? So, there's several questions in this thing. How are you going to broaden the tug? Who, is it the homeowner's responsibility? Whatever, I need to know that. And I need to know how quick you can really use that, uh, smart grid to figure out where the issue is. And then, do you send the truck or you fix it mechanically somewhere up in Oz, you know?
Um, you want me to go ahead and answer some of that now or I can?
Uh, I could say.
Two different questions here, so.
Yeah, um.
Where are you with the undergrounding? I think that's what she's asking.
Okay, so, on the undergrounding, the, so, the Targeted Undergrounding Program, that, that has ended. We're transitioned to the, what is called now as lateral hardening undergrounds. We talked about lateral lines, hardening them by putting them underground. So, lateral hardening underground. Uh, so, right now, we're assessing where those locations will be. Uh, we haven't identified any new locations in Dunedin, but this is where I think, um, the partnership would have to, the two-way communication where if there's issues, where there's an opportunities, where the community wants it underground, whether it's for reliability or aesthetics or, or some other reason, that's where we can work together and do a, a project where the city would, would have to contribute. Well, there's other ways for that payback to happen and we would, we could talk to you about that.
Well, so, I think what, okay, let me condense this. You're saying that if a community comes to you that are right down from the 156, you know, done, and say, we would all like to join together to get this done, then they would have a chance of getting it done?
Well, they would have, yes, they would have a chance, but on Duke's, on Duke's dime, right now, we don't have that. It, it's not listed as a project.
It would go to the homeowners.
So, it would go to the homeowners or the city or a combination thereof.
Okay.
Because it's not a prob, because in your mind, it's not a problem area. Is that why, why you're saying it?
Well, I mean, it has to meet certain criteria. So, we have to keep that, that criteria, you know.
Well, I mean, I'm telling you, we got the criteria.
And we can look at that. If you have a particular area, that's something we should, we should talk to you about.
Yeah, and, um, also, I, I really want to know how the smart thing works when it pings. What do you do? Do you send out a truck? Do you go to Oz? How do you handle it?
Um, like I mentioned before, that's, that part is still to be implemented. Those meters have the capability to do that, but they're not there yet. Um, only because we have to do software upgrades to make everything connect properly. But once it does, once all that's implemented, then literally it will ping it. And it will say, hey, this house has no power. And we already know where this house is, what transformer it's on, what, what fuse protective device it's on, what feeder it's on. And then, we can, it will tell us, based on this, all of these homes are out. This is what the device is. It will say, okay, all these homes are out. That means that there's a problem at this fuse location or somewhere adjacent to it.
And then, you send out the truck.
We send the truck.
But then again, you know, I mean, you've got a rolling stock. And I, I mean, everybody comes from all over the nation. I got that and that's wonderful. Okay, so, um, you know, I had one more, but I will, I think you've heard from me enough right now.
And, and by all means, we're, we're going to make sure that we answer any questions that we can for you here today. So, please keep, if you don't ask it now, save it and we'll ask it later. You know, we want to make sure we answer any questions that you have, at least to the best of our ability. So, uh, yeah. So, uh, we do have that Target Underground. The next thing we have, which.
Oh, wait a minute, I remembered. Okay, because 156 are already undergrounded in my neighborhood.
Right.
Does that actively help the rest of the neighborhood? Or does that just mean I have to run down there and stay with them a week?
It can, it can help. It kind, it kind of goes to that grid thing we talk about. Um, what you can, if they had problems on their overhead lines, sometimes their problems could cause a fuse or a protected device to trip that's further upstream. And now, it will take your power out and their power out. But now, because they're all underground, they will not be the cause of your problem, is the plus side. Um, so, that, that is a plus.
Protect us because, I mean, they're sort of a island unto themselves.
They will not cause problems for you by them having.
We'll just cause problems for ourselves.
I, I can say that it's, that there's going to be, there's all, there's going to be outages.
No, no, you can, they, they can cause problems for the underground, right? But not the reverse.
Yes.
Underground, right. I mean, but how can we cause problems when they're undergrounded?
Yeah, it all depends on the configuration, you know? There's always potential where they'll have no effect to you and neither of you will be affecting each other. You'd have to look at that on a grid perspective, look to see how everything's lined up. But, um, for the most part, you should be islands unto yourselves and it shouldn't, they shouldn't affect you. You shouldn't affect them. Um, but, you know, you'd have to look at the actual grid to see if there, there was any specific ties.
Bob, you want me to interrupt a little bit? Vice Mayor, I'd just talk specifically to the incidents that happened in Dunedin and the situation. The substation, the Dunedin substation that we have made this incident, if it's best, but it was out. Does it make any difference at that point? If you're underground overhead, uh, when your substation is out, no one is receiving power. Because if I'm correct, I think, Mayor, your home is underground.
It is, but I was out, but it was a bad transmission. Their transformer, sorry, it was a bad, I don't know what, but yeah.
But that, that's.
I was out for seven days.
She was out as well. Because again, when the substation is out, it doesn't make any difference. Because, because there is no true underground system. Because again, the, the power starts at the power plant. It, it's over tran, then runs over transmission lines. If those transmission lines are down, again, what happens downstream, um, you know, it doesn't make any difference overhead, underground. So, then, once you get to the substation, in this case, in Dunedin's case.
In this case, you just hardened the library and stadium. So, for the, that particular area, that should give a little more protection.
Not only that, that segues into the next thing that we have right here, which is the self-healing projects. Um, what we've done on the feeders is we've actually taken devices and put them on different locations in the feeders. And we've also upgraded segments of line, um, so that they can interconnect. So, like I mentioned, you have these long lines that run out of the substations and it all branches out. Now, we made it, rather than one long line, you have interconnections. So, that, say, something happened on one part of that feeder, it will automatically reconnect it through a grid process and bring those other customers up. There'll still be a segment in the affected area that will still have no power. But for the most part, many of the customers will get power back almost immediately. That's what the self-healing project does. We install automatic, automated switching so that it will automatically bring power back up and isolate that area. Um, and I believe we have a video that we can show relative to that, too. Kind of give you, uh, an example of exactly how that works. It's, uh, very exciting. So, you are going to see us, um, you have seen us and you will see us, I believe, this year in the city upgrading some lines in preparation for some more equipment. We've already done nine of, the city has 12 feeders. We've already done nine of the feeders, put that equipment on it. And we have three more left to go and we will look to have those complete by around 2025. That's our goal, is to have the entire city on a, a smart grid for.
And we're not going to have a hurricane until 2025?
Well, we have some of it planned for 2022. I just, like I say, our goal is for everything to be done by 2025. Um, you know, we, we do the best we can, but, um, like I mentioned, we, we have a, a large area. We do the best we can to cover as many bases as we can and we, um, do, you know.
Vice Mayor, if I can help them out a little bit. Um, it, it's not too dissimilar from a water distribution system. Say, you're on a cul-de-sac at the end of the street and you're on the dead end of that line. If for some reason, there's a break in that line upstream, then you're out of water. This, what this would be is something similar to a loop system. So, if there, that break occurs upstream of your house, there's a way to valve it off and you can still be fed from another area. So, that's not dissimilar to that.
I like the self-healing idea.
Yeah. It, it does, it's going to do a lot. Um, you know, can I say it's going to be the panacea for a Cat 3 hurricane hitting this area or even a Category 2? I, I can't say that for sure. Um, we're doing what we can. Like, uh, Chris had mentioned before, we've upgraded some of the structures. Uh, the wood poles are gone for much of our transmission. We've moved to steel and concrete because you, like you had mentioned, I personally also have underground, but I had no power for seven days because the trans, the, the entire substation was out. And that was due to transmission poles. So, we are taking those steps to rectify that now. So, that at least that will hopefully not be the situation going forward.
And your problems were during Irma?
Yep.
Yeah.
What you're talking about. And a lot of these improvements you're talking about now have been done since Irma?
Many of them and we're continuing to do them. We have, uh, a plan in place that's actually over the next 30 years. Now, it doesn't mean you're waiting 30 years, but I'm saying it's over the next 30 years to completely harden the entire Florida infrastructure.
Do you all statewide have the obligation to, at a certain date, to have the self-healing software in? What, what's the date that every place in the state of Florida that you?
We, we don't, we aren't mandated to, but we have a goal to have it complete now by 2025. Well, I'm, I'm working on that plan right now. Our goal is to have it complete by 2025 and I'm hoping that we can meet that.
Okay. And nine of, nine of our 12 feeders are done already?
Are done already and we're working on a couple of them right now. On two more of them right now, there'll just be one left and, and that should be done by 2025. I always say, I caveat that with the should and goal because obviously, to your point, storms, we do what we can to make sure that we meet those goals. Sometimes things happen that can prevent that. COVID has also caused our own issues, supply chain issues. We've had problems getting material. I'm sure the city is running into that same thing unfortunately, but we're all working around it and our goal is to still make that happen.
I'll have that video ready.
I'm ready.
Every once in a while, it happens. An unforeseen incident occurs and you lose power. But what if there were an electrical system that automatically reconfigured itself? So when an unexpected event happened, the problem was isolated and the power stayed on in most areas. At Duke Energy, we're making this kind of self-healing system a reality. We're investing in advanced technologies that are transforming the grid into a dynamic electrical system with the ability to automatically detect, isolate and reroute power when a problem occurs. How does a self-healing system work? Let's take a look. Welcome to Orchard City, a community probably very much like yours. It's made up of residential and business customers, some with critical power needs such as hospitals and data centers. Orchard City's data center, school, hospital and select homes are served by the Miller Street Substation. Now, let's see what happens when something causes the power to go out. Without a self-healing system, the power line damage could mean a power outage for many of these customers. A large part of the community could go dark until Duke Energy crews were able to locate the problem and make repairs. But thanks to self-healing technology, digital smart sensors at substations and on power lines detect the problem and communicate with the control system. Switches automatically isolate the damaged section of line. The control system continually monitors the state of the grid and determines the best way to reroute power to as many customers as possible. The control system automatically reconfigures the electric grid to restore power on the undamaged section of line. In our animation, we slowed this process down so you can see the series of events. In reality, this entire self-healing process typically occurs in less than a minute. Customers whose power was rerouted may have experienced the entire self-healing process as a brief power interruption rather than a full outage. Self-healing technology also improves how quickly power can be restored. Once Duke Energy line crews complete their repairs, a system operator can return the electrical system to its normal configuration with a single command, eliminating the need for manual switching. These investments in modernizing the grid bring many benefits. First, we now have more information about the state of the grid. Second, the control system continuously assesses the state of the electrical system for potential issues that could arise. And third, as you saw in Orchard City, the system can perform enhanced restoration to the grid. The system can rapidly detect and isolate problems, protecting the portion of the grid experiencing failure from the rest of the system. The result is fewer customers experience a sustained outage during repairs and power is restored faster. From improved reliability to faster restoration, Duke Energy is investing in self-healing technologies to better serve your needs.
That helped kind of sum up what I was saying?
It's like a stent in your heart.
Yeah. Keep, keep things flowing is the goal, obviously. Yeah. So I'm pretty proud of that program. I think that it's going to do a lot for many customers, you know? It's, like I say, nothing is a panacea unto itself, but when you put all these things together, the programs together that we're working on, the goal is to make it that, or at least our reliability is much better than it had been in the past. So, and we're always looking to do that, give our customers more reliable power, so. I know that we talked a little bit about the things that we have done in the past and a little bit touched on some of the things that we're doing going forward. And that's where I believe we are right now. I had mentioned that we had already done nine and we have three more left to go. We're in the process of installing some of the equipment on the other three this year. And then we are on track to be able to hopefully get it all done by 2025. Some of the things, the equipment is reasonably fast to do, put up, get in place. That's why we can say we can do that one year. Some of the other things take more time, like we have some plans to upgrade some sections of feeder. You'd seen how they rerouted power from one place to another? Well, you have to make sure that those conductors can handle all that additional load. So that's what we do as part of this process, is we say, "Okay, we're going to need to go over here." And I can be very specific. We are planning on doing some reconductor work along MLK. That's for feeder C106. That's along MLK from San Christopher south to around Lorraine Leland Street. We're going to upgrade some smaller wire to the larger wire so that this conductor will now be able to be part of that self-healing grid. That's one location we're doing. Another one is over on C107. And we're going to replace some, some existing fraught copper wire to a larger aluminum wire. So we'll be able to do the same thing. And that's from Broadway Monroe south to Broadway Scotland. And that's about 1,000 feet. Another section we have is for C2806 and has to replace some number six copper, or number two copper wire that we have there to the larger aluminum feeder wire. And that is from Bell Trees Broadway going east to Bell Trees Milwaukee for about 2,000 feet. So that's, that's scheduled for 2022. So I, I appreciate the city because we're going to be in your streets, in your right-of-way, doing work. And I know that it's not convenient for the residents when we, sometimes there are traffic impediments. We'll do everything we can to make sure that the work is seamless and impactless as possible to the customers. But that is work that we will be doing in 2022. And of course, we do have the underground project that we had just talked about for City Hall. I think that's an amazing thing and we always offer that to any municipalities, any municipalities, anytime they want. One of the things that we had talked about is we look at making sure that we credit the city for the value of things that we would be doing in the future toward that undergrounding project. So if we had to upgrade those lines and we knew we had to upgrade those lines in the future, in the near future, we're going to make sure that the city receives appropriate credit where they should for that kind of work. There is a formula online for doing this kind of work, the undergrounding work, that we follow. And basically, we give you credit for the entire value of a storm hardened project, overhead project, as a credit toward your undergrounding. So it's, it's, it's a plus thing toward helping you in those decisions. When you decide you want to do that in your communities. I know that Bob Ironsmith has always been big on aesthetics. He may come knocking on your door from time to time. I'm sure he's always got ideas.
He does, always.
Yep, that's the Bob I remember, so. So that's some of the things that we have going forward. And of course, like I mentioned, some of the self-healing projects that we have, adding that additional equipment, that will be complete by 2025. That's our goal, is for that to be complete by 2025 and the entire city will be, at that point, smart grid. And our goal is to make it outage, so the outages will be much less in duration and fewer, far between. So I think, was there any other questions you had relative to this?
Well, why don't we just get, we're going to, once we get, if everybody's okay, once we get to the end of your presentation-
More questions.
We're going to have more questions.
Yes.
We're trying not to interrupt you too much unless it's specific, but we'll probably take a little five-minute break too before we get into that.
That's good. And I think, yep, we talked about smart grid and what's the next thing? Oh, yeah, the street lighting. That, that's kind of the thing that's near and dear to my heart only because I started with the company and I was in street lighting. I worked with Bob Ironsmith a lot, I knew him as well. We did a lot of the street lighting together at the beginning of my career. So one of the things that we've done is, or have done in the past and continue to do is whenever you have the large events for the Toronto Blue, Toronto Blue Jays Stadium, we proactively check out the lighting and make sure that it's all working properly. Obviously, this is a face for both Duke Energy and the city to have operative lighting when you have events. So that is something that we do want to do. And we, we did have the recent changes in our rates starting in January and that actually is working as a benefit for the city. You are going to see a decrease relative to your lighting account as part of that. And we also have converted about 90% of the existing lighting throughout the city of Dunedin to LED from high-pressure sodium. So I think that's pretty good too, so. Any questions on the lighting?
I've got a number of questions, so I don't even want to.
Okay.
I don't want to interrupt. I want to let, let you get to a point where we can-
And we'll, yeah, we can revisit. And I think from there, we are back to electric vehicle charging and I think that was-
As you know, we've partnered very closely with the city to provide electric vehicle charging stations. It's one of those things where obviously, you know, we believe that electric transportation is the future. And so everything that we can do to ensure that, especially in high corridors and things of that nature, that we are able to meet the needs of, you know, the citizens, but, but also, you know, the city as well. So we, we had a program that was called Park and Plug that, and just so you understand what I say, we had program, everything that we do obviously is regulated. And in 2017, when I were, when we went to the commission for our 2017 to 2021 programs, the Park and Plug was in there. And that particular program, we were allowed to place 530 EV charging stations throughout our service territory. 500 were traditional level-two charging stations. Three of them were, I mean, 30 of them were the fast charging stations. And obviously, in the city, we placed 10 of those here locally, you know, working with the city staff. And for, for our most recent settlement with the Public Service Commission for 2022 through '26, you know, we do have, we don't, it's, it's not, because of all of these, we, we installed at our expense and we maintain them currently. And then at some point, we will turn over ownership to the city on these. But going forward, because I know the city does still have an interest in EV charging stations, we've developed a new rebate program so it doesn't pay the full cost of the charging station now. But we do have some incentives available to all of our customers, you know, to help encourage them to provide more EV charging stations. We can go on to the next slide. And then talk about solar energy. Now, one of the things, I, I'm sure you all recall that, you know, we had to come before you to, for what's called the Clean Energy Connection. One of the things that Duke Energy is doing is creating a subscription service that allows customers who choose to participate in this program, pay a small premium upfront for their power. And for the first couple of years, you will be paying a premium, but as these credits grow, you know, you will actually end up saving money. And that's a 30-year program. And it's one of the things where the city of Dunedin was one of the participants in that. And you know, you know, we know that you are all heavily engaged in the Ready for 100 pledge and, and like you, Duke Energy, we are working to meet a net zero goal by 2050 as well. The, the good thing about, I think about cities like Dunedin, you know, right in Pinellas County, we have a, a pretty active sustainability network, if you will. I know Natalie participates in that. And just to give you a sense of how well this program was received in Pinellas County, you know, we're in 100 cities and 35 counties, but of all the municipalities, when we subscribe municipalities, over 80% of the solar allotment that will go to municipalities in our service territory, more than 80% of it will be coming to Pinellas County. Because we had, you know, it was very well received in Pinellas County. Can't say why it was not well received in other areas of the state. But, you know, so we thank you for choosing to participate in the Clean Energy Connection. And, you know, ultimately, from the city's standpoint, it's a, a great financial incentive as well over the life of the program. So now we, we're at, now we're at the question phase, so.
All right, well, why don't we choose this moment to take a little break? Because I know we all probably have a lot of questions and want to try to make it organized and, okay? So we'll take a little five-minute break. So we'll take a little five-minute break.[313.72]
Some people have a garage behind their home that's, you know, separately metered for whatever reason. So we're having a lot of, you know, a lot of calls from customers about that. But, but let me try to help you understand the philosophy, the philosophy behind that minimum charge. Uh, our capital expenditure plan for the next 10 years in Florida is 6.5 billion dollars. And whether you use one kilowatt of electricity or whether you use a million kilowatts of electricity, you are benefiting from all of those technologies that, uh, we were just talking about. So, you know, your usage, you know, again, if you are a very low user and, you know, you have an outage and that smart grid technology, um, you know, shortens that outage. Yeah, you may not be using a lot of electricity, but you are benefiting from all of that technology. So, um, and if you look at, and I mean, not to get too mathematical here, but, you know, if you take 6.5 billion, which is our capital, um, ex, you know, capital plan for the next 10 years, divided by, we have 1.9 million customers. Uh, if you do that calculation, I believe right off hand, that's $3,400 per customer. You take that $30 a month charge over that next 10 years, that, um, pretty much equals, uh, it, I mean, it's off just, you know, you, I mean, when you're talking billions, it's off, you know, a few millions there. But it's one of those things where that's basically the premise behind the, the customer charge. Because, you know, we're investing significant money in the future. Over the last five years, we have invested significant money in all of these technologies. And the, the decision was made that, you know, all of our customers should share in that cost rather than it be tied strictly to usage only.
So are solar customers hurt more by that?
Well, I would say it, it depends on, I would, I would say it depends on how, how, if, if you have a, a solar system that, let's say you, because, because again, keep in mind, uh, a lot of solar customers think that they're not using our power. Uh, most solar customers, you know, solar on a very good day, uh, the what's called capacity factor, meaning the amount of time that it is producing solar is in the low 30 percents. So the mid 60% of the time, you are using Duke Energy Power. Most people that have solar, they still receive a bill from Duke Energy because they do not generate enough to, uh, cover the, you know, the amount of power that they're using from us. But if you do, if you have someone who has ideally sized or, or oversized their system, you know, historically in that case, if, let's, let's just use a thousand to make it simple. If they were, you know, using, if they were producing a thousand kilowatts of power and then they were returning, uh, you know, they're returning a thousand kilowatts to our system and then they're using a thousand kilowatts. The only thing that they would have received the charge for would have been the $12.83 plus whatever. You obviously have the franchise fee and municipal tax. So there are some solar customers that will be impacted by that. But, you know, most of the solar customer right now, and I wish Commissioner Gow was here so I could ask him where, where he was. But most customers would not see a change because of, of their solar system. Because most are not returning back, uh, you know, in excess of what they're using from us.
Gotcha. So then the legislation question on net metering.
Uh, the legisla, that particular one, Duke Energy has not taken a position on that bill. Uh, it's one of those things, you know, we certainly support customers' rights to have solar. My mouth's getting all dry today, but, you know, we certainly su- support, you know, our customers having solar. We're adding about 1,500 customers a month. Uh, the Duke Energy system has more, uh, solar customers on it than any other utility in Florida, including the one that happens to be three times larger than us and maybe the organization that, um, you know, is advocating for this net metering bill. Um, but we haven't taken a position on it. Um, it, it's one of those things where, you know, our, our philosophy is, you know, if a customer wants the, um, the right to do that, then we're, then we're certainly, uh, willing to support their right to do that. The one thing I will share with the commission, just from, you know, my experience on this, this issue. Um, if the legislation passes, um, the good news, as I read the bill, the last time I saw it, there was a 10-year, in other words, if you are already on net metering, you will remain on net metering for 10 years. So what that does is it protects the customer who, let's say you went out two years ago and you put solar on your home and, you know, you did it, you know. Personally, I'm the kind of person, I hope that the reason people are doing it, are doing solar is, you know, for the right reasons of the environment, not necessarily for cost savings. But let's say you can't, you were the customer who did it strictly from a cost benefit analysis. You know, if you, if you invested $30,000 two years ago and the calculation was that, you know, you were going to get a payback in seven to 10 years. If our state, if the bill passes, uh, did like the state of Nevada did, because when Nevada passed it, it immediately, net metering went away. And so those customers, you know, were, you know, who did it for financial reasons were significantly impacted because, you know, the investment that they thought was going to have a, a seven to 10-year payback now went to a 25 to 30-year payback. So it's one of those things where if it does pass, at least there are protections, uh, limited protections, 10 years, for the customers that are already, you know, on solar. So I think that's, um, you know, a positive thing. But our, our official position as a company, as a company is, you know, we are not taking a position on that bill.
Who's pushing the bill?
I don't know with certainty, but I suspect.
Who do you suspect?
I would suspect it is a, a larger utility in the state of Florida.
One that starts with the word Florida?
That's what I understood, yeah.
So Mo, would you just?
I, I think, I, again, I don't know with certainty, but I think they're, they're publicly saying they're supporting it.
Would you, would you speak to what the net metering is?
Okay. What net, what net metering is, um, and net metering, um, there's, and, and when it comes to solar, there's basically two ways to, to meter it. You have bidirectional metering and you have net metering. What net metering says is, going back to my thousand kilowatt example, you know, your system produces in excess while it, during the afternoon, hot sunny day, you, you produce more than a thou, you produce a thousand kilowatts and send it back to our system. By law, we are required to buy that. Uh, and we can't say, we don't need your power today, whatever, we have to take that power. And then, and then when using my example of the evenings and everything, you use a thousand kilowatts of our power. When we send it back on a net metering system without customer charge and things like that, that would be a zero bill. Bidirectional metering, it works the same way, except when the utility buys the electricity from the customer, they buy it, and it's, it's set differently in each state. But in most cases, it's, they, they buy the power back from you at whatever the prevailing wholesale rate is. So in other words, if we can generate power for 6.2 cents a kilowatt, but we charge 11.9% per kilowatt, when that, in that customer, I can't, obviously can't do the math. I should have picked better numbers, so I could have done it in my head real quick. But that customer only receives the credit that the utility was offset. Because, you know, if we can generate power at a cheaper price, then, um, you know, the logic behind it is, if we can generate it ourselves for this price, why would we pay someone else a higher price?
So in essence, the idea is, is that they're trying to get rid of net metering so that that's the system you would use?
Right, and obviously that's a huge disadvantage to customers who want solar.
Well, and, and the thing to think about, and, and I know this is a kind of a, uh, it, it's a silly example, but I'll try to use it, uh, you know, to just, to make the point. I mean, the challenge is, I mean, right now, you know, I don't think any utility in the state of Florida has more than maybe just a, you know, a small percentage of their customers on, uh, solar. So, you know, is it truly affecting the bottom line of utilities? You know, not in any significant way. But if you did have a situation where you had 30% participation, 40%, you know, basically, because again, keep in mind, all of these solar customers are still utilizing every bit of our technology and expenses. So if you got to a point to where you had, you know, massive solar, um, you know, privately owned solar, the cost to maintain the grid would be spread among far fewer people. So obviously, it would increase the rates to the, the, the non-participating customer. So the example I've used before, and again, it's silly, I recognize that. But, um, Mayor, what's your favorite restaurant?
Oh, I'm not answering that question.
I would get her in jail.
No way, Jose. But they know.
We'll pick a restaurant in St. Pete. Let's say Ruth Chris Steakhouse, we'll use that as an example. You know, you decide that, you know, I want to go to Ruth Chris tonight, um, but I'm going to bring my own steak. I'm going to bring my own wine, I'm going to bring my own potato. And you go in there and you sit down at their table, their beautiful table, and you eat your steak, your potato, and your wine. Do you owe Ruth Chris any money? You know, it's one of those things where, because that's really what's happening for these customers who.
Like a corking thing.
It's one of those things where, um, actually, and that's really, you know, uh, you know, we can now call that our corkage fee, I kind of like that. But, um, but, you know, it's one of those things where the, a solar customer who, again, is at that perfect thousand give take where they're paying nothing, again, they are utilizing every piece of equipment that Bob has talked about and, and everything. So, um, you know, I can understand, you know, why there are utilities pushing for the move away from net metering to where, so they can buy that power, you know, for what it would cost them to produce. You know, net metering absolutely encourages, uh, people to, um, adv, to advance solar. You know, so it's one of those things where, uh, I mean, I, I can't sit here and predict to you what's going to happen. But, um, I do see, you know, you know, as the rules are written today, you know, and in, in my opinion, the solar customer today is being subsidized by the rest of the ratepayers. And so I think that is the logic behind the, the, the wish to change. But, you know, we certainly, you know, our utility is, we're, we're not at a point today where it's making a significant enough impact that, uh, we are, that we would be advocating for change on this issue.
Thank you, Jeff. Yeah, I mean, I'll let everybody else, obviously I had tons of times to ask questions, so.
Okay. Commissioner Tonga, questions?
Big, the big questions, all of that?
Yeah, whatever you think is important, sure.
I'm sorry?
Whatever you think is important for this conversation.
Absolutely. Um, we've, I, I have, I have talked before about, you know, the cost of going, of going, uh, total, total undergrounding, and we, and we know it's been a lot. We've asked, I asked that question back in 2017, I think, and it was huge. It was, couldn't even comprehend what, how big that was. And I didn't know if that was really the answer to the issue. Because obviously, you brought it, you, one of you said that your, your power was out for seven, you know, for seven days or whatever, and, and that was upstream. And so what are you, what are you going to do if it's upstream? But what is, what is the most effective way for us to ensure in the quickest way possible that the upstream is good? Is it through this, this, uh, um, this smart system? Is, is that what is going to, is really going to help us the most at this point in time? That's the first question.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, the, the bigger thing is us storm hardening our system. Because, um, you know, literally from the power plant to your home, everything needs to be in perfect shape, um, for you to have power. So, you know, we're investing, you know, significant amounts of dollars into hardening the transmission system. You know, as Bob alluded to, um, we, we moved away from, uh, wood poles in the transmission system. We are, you're seeing, and a lot of the, what we call lattice structures, that's the big towers, and we're moving away from those as well to what we call monopoles, which, uh, much stronger, um, you know. So secure the system from the plant to the substation is step one. Make the improvements in the substation like we have done in Dunedin recently to ensure that that equipment is, uh, able to withstand the challenges of the storm environment that we live in. You know, we're, the program, we talked a little bit about TUG, I know, when, when Commissioner Kynes was talking about it, we talked about TUG, but the program that we're now, we, we're continuing to do that. What we're calling it now is called Substation Optimization. So what we are doing is basically looking at the reliability, uh, from each one of our substations. And when, you know, when the substation is found to be, um, one of the, uh, less reliable substations, you know, we are doing all of the work, you know, from around, in that whole substation, rather than moving from, you know, the targeted undergrounding project, for example, we were moving from this neighborhood to this neighborhood to this neighborhood. So now we're doing, you know, we're, we're doing all the work that needs to be done to improve the reliability of, of that substation, you know, one substation at a time. And so that, you know, will continue over, you know, the next, you know, 10 years. But, um, the point about, two things about undergrounding that everyone needs to understand. First and foremost, if you're undergrounded, that does not prevent you from having out, an outage, as the mayor can attest, because.
She's underground.
You know, she's, she was underground at that time. And secondly, underground, you know, if you just look, and it makes sense if you think about, think it through, when you have a power outage and you're underground, it actually, uh, the average underground power outage is longer than an overhead outage. Reason being is, with an overhead outage, you know, it's very easy for us to roll a truck to. If it's a fuse or something like that, it's fixed instantly. So, you know, statistically, you know, you have fewer outages on underground utilities, but you have longer duration outages.
My second question, you just started answering, or almost answered it. What's the disadvantage of having underground? I've never heard anybody ask that question yet. What's the disadvantages of having underground?
Well, I would say, I mean, those two things, I would, would say, yeah. Depending on experts, y'all have a, uh.
Yeah, that, that is the biggest one, is that, because you have to isolate where the fault is. You have to dig it up and repair it, and that's a big problem. Now, our, we do put it on loop systems, so if a primary, the high volder stuff goes bad underground, you can isolate it, sink it out, and get people back up quicker. But if it's your service line running to your house, that can take a bit longer. Um, and a lot of times, what we end up doing is temporary repairs and coming back within a week or two later. For those who've lived in underground neighborhoods, you may have seen that. Because we can't just go trenching in a new wire, you have to locate some place, uh, when you do the trenching. So there's those disadvantages there. But for the most part, um, you know, you're, you're, you are going to have fewer outages, but it's going to be longer duration longer than, than solar.
Also, we talked, thank you very much, we talked about the smart metering, and we said at some point in time, it is going to be very smart, uh, in the near future, sometime in the near future.
I, I would say it's pretty smart already. The reason why I would say that is, you know, for example, just from my personal phone, I can go right now and look and see how much power did I use yesterday at 3:00 at my house, which that's technology that's available, and when I say me, it's not me because I'm an employee, that's available to any customer. Uh, so you can get a daily readout of your usage. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm one of those people, I look at mine, obviously I'm in the business, I look at mine, and I'm like, what the heck was I doing yesterday at 6:00 PM? And why, you know, why was there a skyrocket? So we, that, we have that technology available, which I think from a customer perspective is the most impactful. The other thing too, it allows our customers to say, you know, if you are a financially challenged individual and you really need to keep your bill at a hundred dollars a month or whatever, you can go in there and program it to where, um, you know, we will send you usage alerts. Because let's say it's the third day of your billing cycle and you've already used $20 worth of power, you're probably going to exceed a hundred dollars during that billing cycle. So we can send a usage alert. I actually got a usage alert yesterday, which makes sense because I have been using my heat, brilliant, uh, a lot in the last couple of weeks. So I got a usage alert telling me that I need to either curtail my usage or expect a higher bill. So that technology's there. The other thing about, you know, we talked about pick your own due date, uh, which, again, especially for our financially challenged customers, that is huge. The other thing about, we, we have a system called Pingit. Uh, well, right now, um, you know, and that's where Bob was talking about it, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Bob, but right now, it's not automatically telling us that there is a, an outage at Commissioner Frehney's house. But if Commissioner Frehney calls into us and says, hey, I've got an outage at my house, through our Pingit system, you know, this is live today, you know, we can ping the meter at Commissioner Frehney's house to see if, uh, if power is getting to her, you know, to her meter. If the power's getting to the meter, then we know that it's inside trouble. And rather than us having to roll a truck out to say, ma'am, it's your breaker switch here. You know, so from a customer perspective.
I would have checked the breaker, come on, yeah.
I know you would, but, um, but, but I'm saying, but that's going to be significant cost savings to, um, us as a utility, uh, and ultimately our customers, because it's going to, um, prevent a lot of unnecessary truck rolls. The other thing where I think it's going to be, um, I mean, I, I hate, you know, let's face it. I know y'all are all very disappointed with our, with us, but, but don't ever forget, we were disappointed with ourselves as well. You know, you know, I had to be on those calls with, you know, the mayor and things like that. So again.
Poor thing.
That, that was, you know, let's face it, it was not a, and.
Well, that's, Street Julie was definitely out for that one.
So I'm saying, it, it was not a pleasant time for us either. I mean, I just, we'll make that very clear. But one of the things that, you know, we obviously had some significant technical challenges during that storm. Uh, we were telling people who had power that they didn't have power. We were telling people who, who didn't have power that they did have power. With this Pingit system now, you know, if you're, if you have someone at a shelter and there's a question whether or not there's power at their home, we can ping that house and say, you know, especially if you're dealing with someone with a, uh, special need or whatever, rather than sending them to their house thinking that they have power for them to get there and not have power, you know, we can check to make sure that, you know, power is at least getting to the meter. That doesn't necessarily mean, you know, that it's, if something, if the meter's been damaged or something like that, or they've had damage to their home.
But in the smart meter, can't I do that myself to see if I've got power, something happening at the house? I could do that myself. And I'm asking in concert with Commissioner Kynes. She was asking, you know, when we have these storms, how much do y'all know? How much will you know using this, the smart metering system as to where the problem is? Uh, for example, for example, when we get a storm, I get tons of calls and the people want to know. They say, okay, hey, John, what are we going to do? Who's going to call these folks? We got, we're out of power. And I, I go, I get out in the Jeep and I ride along, and there's five houses that are out and nobody else seems to be out. I can, I don't have to ping anything, I can see their lights that are on, et cetera, but there's four that are out. Um, I don't know who's calling who, or they want me to call, or they call, they call and they want me to call. Well, it seems like with a smart meter, you would be able to see that. Is that not correct, or?
Oh, that, that's what our goal is right now. Like I mentioned before, right now, it's just a matter of getting all of our softwares, uh, software, uh.
I'm sorry, you're going to have to come to the microphone because they can't pick it up otherwise.
Yeah, I kind of mentioned a little bit earlier. Right now, we're in the process of upgrading our software to make it so that those two, those things will properly connect and, and do what we needed to do. Uh, we have the meter capability, it's, it's like you have to get all the pieces all in place and then get them to connect and talk. So we have the meters in place, now we're getting the rest of the software in place to be able to do all that, um, talking, calculating, working together. I don't, exactly, I was just texting somebody right now, hey, do you know when it's going to be ready? And, um, I, I didn't get that text out yet, but, um, I would, I'm curious too, how soon that's going to be. I, I don't think it's going to be a whole lot longer, but that is one of our goals, to make that a operational item so that it will indeed, that's one of the reasons why we got these smart meters, because we want that capability. It's going to tell us so much more, other than just, hey, their power's out. It's going to tell us how accurate all of our infrastructure in GIS is. It's going to tell us, this customer is on this wire, but oh, we thought they were on that wire. It, it's really going to tell us a whole lot more than just outage information. But, um, we just need to finish getting all the pieces.
It's probably in less than two years, if it's a smart.
That's what our goal is, I would think. Um, have I got the confirmation back yet? No, I don't. But that would be an ideal goal, I think, to, to make that happen. You know, we want to be able to, to do that.
Regardless of whether you're underground or, or, or above ground.
It won't matter.
It won't matter, you'll tell where it is, and so, so you're not necessarily protected by being underground because that could be a bigger problem.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly.
I'll, I'll go ahead and let somebody else ask, ask a question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions, additional questions?
No, I already asked most of my questions.
Okay. I have a couple. So when I was reading the report, uh, on page five, it mentioned two things. The radial feed to downtown, um, I guess the old report had recommended making this a loop system to be improved, to get improved reliability. And your response is we, that we would consider this feeder to be looped because it's tied to other feeders. The branch lines are radial, which is consistent with our tariff. Looping of branch lines typically requires contribution from the customer. I guess my question to you is, if, if it is more reliable, why wouldn't you go ahead and do it? Why would the customer have to pay for us to, pay for that to be done?
I can, I can take that.
Microphone, please. Thank you.
Our, our obligation when we do line extension work to, to serve our customers is to do it at the most cost-effective manner.
Yeah, I know.
And taking into consideration also the, uh, um, you know, the reliability aspect of it. So for that overhead, for us to be able to do that interconnecting to make that happen, um, would not be cost-effective. We have to collect that extra above and beyond. We even do that for looping too. Like if you are a commercial customer and you need a transformer for your place, our standard is looping. You get that first wire that runs from the line over to the transformer, that's included. But the one that runs back for the loop on underground, you, you're paying that cost. So, um, we do collect that from the commercial customers. Anything that is above the minimum needed to get power, per our tariff, we are, are supposed to collect.
I get that, but this is, this isn't new. This is existing service.
Yeah.
And it's, it looks to me like the old report was saying that it was problematic. Now, granted, that was 20 years ago. Because what it said was the downtown area is, I'm not going to say this word right, radially served and should be looped to improve the liability, or the reliability. Includes Honey Lane, um, and Broadway from Scotland to Monroe.
Oh, I think the smart grid is going to take care of that. Because, um, from what I'm understanding, we're, we're going to be putting, tying all those feeders together. So it'll no longer be radial fed anymore, at least at the feeder level.
Okay, because it doesn't say that.
Yeah.
It's, what it's saying is, if you want it done, the customer has to pay. And that's, that's why I'm asking the question.
I think that we're looking specifically at the neighborhood lines. Like if you have a line running down your street and it dead ends, that would be a radial line in your neighborhood. And if you want that to be a looped line, then we would have to run another line down there and connect it up. And that would be a, a premium cost as per our regulations.
Well, how is the smart thing going to solve this?
It's going to solve it on, at the feeder level, at the bigger level. And you've mentioned specifically downtown, well.
That's what this says, radial feed to downtown.
Yeah, I believe we're going to have more.
Well, this, this question came up during the development of the report, is what, what does this really mean? And the feeder, that, that one, that one.
Help me out here if you want, if, I mean, chime in, Mo, I'm.
I'm going to answer because we had the same question.
Yeah, okay, we did, yeah, so.
So the feeder, the way it was described in the old report, that this is a radial feed and this is, it's a vulnerability, we've got that feeder tied. So when we tie feeders together, that's the vert, that's looping. It's just a different terminology. So at the feeder level, we tie them together. At the lateral level, we loop them. At the lateral level, we loop them. So when it said in the old report that this is radially fed and it's vulnerable, well, we've got that feeder tied together. And I, you know, I can't say when exactly that happened since the very old report till now. But you, we could say it's looped. I mean, that's the wrong terminology for Duke, but the feeder is now tied together. So if there was a sense that that was vulnerable, that's not the case now. It's a feeder tied together.
Are you, are you and you satisfied with that answer?
Yeah.
Yeah, Mayor, and I'll try to clarify it, going back to what Jorge mentioned earlier about a sewer system or water system going to the end of the, the street. From Duke's perspective, if you've got one, you know, pipe going to the house at the end of the street, that would be a radial, radial feed. In other words, if something happens, we don't have another way to immediately reroute power to that. With these feeders being tied together, if you have a feeder outage that's on, you know, serving downtown, we have another option to route power to that line. So, you know, from the perspective of the customers, you know, they do have an alternate source of, of a supply. So that's why we would consider it to be, you know, based on the terminology in there, we would, we would consider that looped.
So you two are satisfied with the answer?
Yes, and I will say, I mean, this got beat on a lot of the time.
Okay, well, that's why I'm asking.
Unfortunately, Will's not here, but, and, because Will just, you know, he, he beat on himself.
Yeah, okay, I just, I mean.
But it's, it's a great question.
Yeah.
And, and again, I think the whole issue of the alternate thing, that's where the healing will come in. Because if, if there's an outage, then it goes to the other way that you can get the, the energy.
All right, on the same page, you talk about transformer inspections. And you talk about the overhead transformers that are mounted to the poles. And you say there is no formal inspection process for these transformers, that your crews inspect them during their usual time in the field. Well, that's worrisome if there's no formal inspection process. So talk to me about that. Because I believe in my instance, the outage that I had, I think it was a bad transformer. And I had been having outages for years and, and somehow just thought that was normal. Until when I complained to Jeff about it, they fixed it. And I, I have some shut off things that normally happen, but that's it. So it, how, how do you inspect it and how often? I mean, you have to have some timeframe to inspect these things, right?
Well, the reason there's not a formal one is because our crews are out there constantly. And it's, it'd be more cumbersome to develop a, a formal inspection program to look at stuff that we're driving by and up in buckets all the time. So that, when we say there's not a formal one, it's already in, in expectation of our crews while they're out there to be looking at our transformers, to be looking at anything that could be potentially in need of repair. But to create a formal program around that, you're just creating some, almost like adding more bureaucracy into what we're doing. The, the underground pad mounted transformers, that requires us to take a look at and so.
Right, and that's, that's why I'm asking, because you have, in 2022, it says a new inspection program for the surface mounted equipment on a five year inspection cycle. But you have no inspection cycle for the transformers, and that's concerning to me.
And, well, we put that in there out of transparency, that there is no formal program. But again, with them up in the air and attached to the poles, it's the inspection, it's the expectation of our crews to be able to look at those. And if there's any need of repair, that they reported in or they take action.
Okay, I'm just going to say I'm, I'm very concerned about that. So as you're, as you're working through your negotiations with our agreement, I, I just, I'm very concerned with that.
Mayor, may I?
Mayor, if I.
Sure.
So on the, on the transform, I, like I said, I had done with my big questions and I got a couple of little ones, and that's one of them. Because we have, occasionally, we will lose a transformer off the pole in our neighborhood. But I don't know why we lose it. There's transformers traditionally in great shape forever unless they take the hit, unless they get a hit. Because everybody always says, oh, we heard a pop. I don't know where that pop came from. Did it come from lightning or did it come, what caused it? So does a transmitter have a, like, for example, moving parts that would have to be adjusted or checked? Or does a transformer normally last almost forever unless it takes a shot?
That, yeah, I can speak to that a little bit. For the transformers themselves, they rarely have any issues. And that's one of the reasons we don't have an inspection thing. So when you have a failure, it's usually not the transformer. Usually it was an animal that got on a line and that, what you're hearing pop, we have a fuse on that transformer that protects overload, protects things, a power surge from getting to your home or blowing up the transformer. So when that was happening, it's just like the breaker in your home, you had overloaded something inside, the breaker tripped. That's what you're hearing in essence is a giant breaker tripping out there in the transformer because there is a, a fault sensed. The transformer is still fine. The, the number of times that we actually go out and have to replace a bad transformer due to an outage is very, very small. And there is no, one of the reasons why there's no particular inspection program, I mean, you can drive by them and you can, and see if there's any potential issue that would look like it would be causing it to fail in the near future. But as far as anything else, there's not really a particular tell, I guess you can say. You know, there's not something that's going to say this transformer is going to fail in a year or four years or five years. It's just, they, they just generally work, just like the breakers in your home. It's not going to do anything, it's just going to keep doing what it does until it doesn't.
But what I would assume.
Yeah.
And again, not trying to tell you how to run your business, but I would assume when you're doing your tree trimming every three years or whatever, that you would be inspecting and marking off on something that you've inspected it.
We, whenever, to the point they brought up before, anytime that we do any work anywhere, we always observe all of our equipment on the pole. That includes transformers, the ground lines, the arresters, our insulators, everything. And if we see anything bad when we're out there doing our work, then we put in for that to get repaired at the same time we're doing any other work. Also wanted to mention too, you had mentioned we do have an inspection for the pad mount transformers.
That's what it says here.
Right, and that's true, we do. Biggest point being difference, when you have equipment on the ground like that, it rusts. You end up with things that happen when it's on the ground that you wouldn't when it's in the air. That constant water contact is a bit of a issue. So we do end up doing proactive checks on that because you just can't have oil leaking into the ground.
Well, I, I get it, I understand what you're saying, but I, it's, it's concerning to me.
And, I mean, at, at the risk of, of putting my foot in my mouth, I would compare it to something, if the city had, I would imagine you have an inspection program for water lines, but you may not have an inspection program for sidewalks because sidewalks are easily viewable and, but maybe you do, so I could just put my foot in my mouth. But that's, that's kind of like a, a good comparison, sidewalks or, or something that's easily visible by city staff and, and your public works folks. It might be more cumbersome to go through and have a constant checklist. That, that'd be a reasonable analogy to what we're doing.
Mayor, if I could, when we did meet and discuss this particular topic at, at length, I know from my perspective, being in kind of an asset management geek and having done that for the better part of my career, you know, we, we had a different approach, I guess, to, to their business model as to what we would do. And after lengthy discussions, we kind of respected that and let them conduct business, I guess, the way they, they feel they should. But it's not necessarily the practice that we would follow.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Okay. There's a couple of things that I want to ask, I think of our staff. So we have right away agreements with these utilities, right? That's what they pay, pay us for, right?
Correct.
The various utilities.
Easement agreements and rights away agreements, yeah.
And I know you can't answer this now, but, and I don't even know if it's legally allowed. But it seems to me that we should try to negotiate that if one utility needs to move, the one that it's attached to, that they're required to go to. I mean, is that even a consideration or an option?
Actually, I can speak to it a little bit. I believe Chris Rowe with BMO's Tallahassee office is on, is on the line. Because we've had.
Do you understand what I'm trying to get at?
Yeah.
On both ends, it just feels like we need to.
Need help.
We need help and we need to force it. I don't know how to do that the right way. And again, I'm not trying to solve it today, but.
Yeah, but specific to the question, you know, having reviewed the, the draft franchise agreement that Duke provided and having gone over it here recently with Chris Rowe, there were some conversations regarding the annual permit that is referenced in, in the franchise agreement. And I think to, to your comment, the mayor is, and Chris can hopefully, I know enough to be dangerous here, so I'll let him chime in at, at some point. But with respect to those other utility providers, we have franchise agreements with Duke. We have one with Clearwater Gas. The other utility service providers, Frontier, Spectrum and others, there's a change in the legislature. And, and so we, we no longer have franchise agreements with them. That's dictated by the PSC, I believe. But I'll let Chris Rowe chime in because some of that is where they're restricted, I believe, in forcing somebody to get off their pole once they vacated the pole. So Chris, if you could elaborate.
You should be able to unmute yourself, Chris.
This is Chris, are you able to hear me?
Yep, thanks.
It's, so there is a city code provision, I believe it's 58715, that requires utility providers to seek an annual permit for operations in the city. Mayor, are you able to hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, so the, the city code requires your utility providers to seek an annual permit for operations in the city. The agreement with Duke originally and, and the new franchise agreement that's been presented has a, has a carve out for Duke that basically says they won't be required to apply for, obtain or, or pay for permits. And so that is an item of discussion that Jorge and I have gone over, whether or not we need to address that directly in the franchise agreement and basically eliminate that tech so that Duke remains subject to that city code provision. It's my understanding that Duke has complied with that to date, although they, the, the original franchise agreement did include an exception from that.
So Chris, I think the mayor's question was specific to other utilities that might be on a Duke pole. And if they subsequently go underground, the ability for either Duke or the city to require those other utilities that are still hanging on that pole to be removed.
Or to be, or to be relocated, Chris.
So that, that is, and maybe a function of the other agreements with the other utility providers, is it Clearwater Gas and one other?
That was my question.
Apparently they, in the case of cable and telecom, they've been, there's no longer a need to have an agreement?
Gotcha.
To what you mentioned, there are, there are probably some specifics to navigate there with those specific agreements. And there's actually a statute to require on the limitations that we can require for relocation. Mm-hmm. So we can, we can dial into those and provide a summary, Mayor.
Yeah, that would be great. Because I, I just think we're going to have to look at it, try to solve it if we can, you know, one way or another. And maybe it's multiple things we have to do to get it to coordinate. But whatever we can do to alleviate the, the business of undergrounding properly, you know, we want to. I have some other asks and questions, but I, I want to give other people. So do you have any more questions?
I don't have any more questions to comment.
John, do you have any more questions?
I was going to follow through on that, on that transformer, just in case somebody is, is listening to this. And so very, very quickly, so who, how do you reset that transformer if it's been kicked off? Does that, can you do that through the smart system or through the?
In, in most cases, you know, as Bob was alluded to, it's because the fuse has blown. That's what you're actually hearing when you hear the bang, that is the fuse. Unfortunately, the fuse cannot be repaired without sitting in a truck. But the good news is, historically, anybody downstream would be out of power. Now with the smart system, only those in the immediate, you know, served by that transformer will be out. Because now, you know, we have the ability.
And with undergrounding, we still have that transformer?
It's, it's same mechanisms of, of working, but yeah, so unfortunately, we still have to roll a truck for that.
Okay, I'm, I'm fine, I'm done.
You're good. And I, I don't think, you didn't have any more questions, right?
I had two.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, on, okay, let's go back to underground. Now, that's my favorite topic. And this is almost a question for the city. It's a question for y'all too. And that is, how much does the city, how, how much are, is the city tied in to undergrounding as some sort of requirement to all development? Both residential projects, multi-residential and complex multi-use. Because, you know, that is something we can do at this level. So I, I'd just throwing that out there, but that's my question.
So we don't require undergrounding?
Yeah, and that could be a real issue.
Right.
Well, with respect to the land development code for new subdivisions, granted, we, we don't have that much vacant land left in the city. But for new subdivisions, typically during the infrastructure review process, we do request and, and most often the developer complies with undergrounding utilities because one, it's, it's a selling point for that particular subdivision. So on new subdivisions, most likely, almost all the time, the utilities are undergrounded as a part of that development process.
We have condominium projects, that's not pure, you know, residential subdivisions, why can't we require it there?
What Jorge is saying is that the new ones that are going in, those would be undergrounded? The infill development is, is what I'm concerned about more in terms of, because then we'd have the, you know, pole going up and then down and underground and that type of a thing. So we can certainly look into it.
You know, Deborah, could I just make one comment? You know, the other piece of that is, you know, I did it in 2004, I did a remodel of my house and I had the line going from my house to the backyard line. And I think at that time it cost $800. And so I think it's also creating awareness. And I'll tell you, I look at that every day and I'm like, thank God I did that. But you, because you have your moment, you do it when you're doing all the other stuff. But I think too, I don't know how we try to create awareness when people are doing those types of things, you know, take, take the opportunity to, to put a line underneath. Because any line underneath just, I mean, it just aesthetically looks so much better and it's.
And I still, you know, thank you all very much for saying undergrounding has its issues too. However, I would rather, you know, say, well, I'm going to have very good service most of the time. And if there's an issue, it's going to take longer, instead of I never know when I'm going to have good service, you know, with overhead. So, you know, that's debatable, but, you know, I.
But to your point, Commissioner Kynes, the city of Clearwater, I'm not saying their ordinance is the perfect ordinance or whatever, but they do have an undergrounding ordinance in place that I believe, again, ordinances aren't my expertise, I believe that it does address the issue of like remodels and things of that nature, so.
And that's maybe a point you should.
I'm assuming that would be easy for you to pull, but if not, I can get someone from our team to.
And I would really appreciate that.
Yeah, I can get, because I know the city of Clearwater does have that, a pretty, it's, it sounds like the ordinance that I'm hearing you saying that you would like to consider.
I would like to, to study it, definitely. And, you know, I thought you're, you know, on net zeroing, okay? I did a CLE course. And the bottom line from what you said, you, you intimated that it's always an environmental rather than a financial. And I would debate that because I think people do say, I'm going to do solar and I'm going to cut my bills. And I, I think that's, you know, I think they're inextricably woven. So here's the question, when you have enough solar, so what you're saying now, there's a small pool that want to sell their thing to you. And therefore you can produce it at this cost, so why should you pay them a higher cost? But at some point, solar may be a bigger, much bigger producer than electric. At some point, I'm not saying, I'm saying 20, 30, I don't know. I'm, you know, I, I'm not the Wizard of Oz. But at some point, that economics are going to stabilize. Is that true or false?
Well, I mean, I can't say, with, because again, I'm not a solar expert, so I can't say true. But, but what you're saying intellectually sounds true. Because if you think about it, it's one of those things where what, in my opinion, is going to be the real game changer is, is not solar, it's battery storage. Because right now, today, you know, you can have all the solar in the world. Let's say you were completely disconnected from the grid. You can have all the solar in the world, but at 9:00 PM tonight, you're not going to have any power because you don't have a way to store it.
Oh, okay, I got you.
Yeah, so it's storage is the issue. But solar costs have dropped dramatically. I mean, that's why at Duke, you know, we have, I mean, I don't know the exact number of solar panels that we're at today, but we're approaching about 3 million solar panels. You go back five years ago, I don't know what the number was, but it was very, very small. So, you know, utility scale solar is being developed all over the country. So because their price parity has become relatively close with other generating sources.
And that's what I'm.
Yeah. But then even like talking about different fuel sources, you know, just last week, Duke announced that by 2030, does anybody recall the exact percentage? But we are, because we still, especially in the Midwest, we have a lot of coal-fired generation still today. By 2030, I want to say we're cutting that to 5%. By 2035, we will no longer have any coal facilities. In the state of Florida, I would say we're ahead of the game in terms of coal because we are down to one site in Florida. And we have been at one site for at least five years because we've retired, we've been aggressively retiring coal plants in Florida for many years. But yeah, as, you know, battery storage will be the game changer and that's what I always say. The thing about solar that is a little bit, you know, misunderstood is that, you know, for example, I'll use last week as the perfect example. We are a winter peaking utility and that surprises most people. And what I mean by that is at a single point in time, the demand from our customers is higher in the winter than it is on a July day. And to put it in perspective, and like I said, the reason, think about it this way, we all get up on those 38-degree mornings. We get up, we turn on the heat, jump in the shower, turn on blow dryers, turn on coffee pots. So from just at that instant in time, our demand can jump to as high as 13,000 megawatts. On a standard July-August afternoon where it's 94 degrees and 100% humidity, our demand is usually running in the 7,000 to 8,000 megawatt range. The reason for that is the mayor has her air conditioner on, you have your air conditioner on, but yours is going on and yours is going off and this one's going on and, you know, it's just one thing. So it's a very balanced load. If you look at it like on a four-hour cycle or whatever, it's pretty much a straight line of demand. But on cold days, you know, it's, you're going to see spikes that are just incredible. And those typically happen at 7:00 AM in the morning. And so that's why I always tell people that, you know, it will be a challenge to get completely off of some baseload fuel because, you know, at 7:00 o'clock in the morning, you're not getting any solar. And again, so unless the battery, and it will, I mean, the cost of batteries will go down. I mean, we're, you know, at Duke, we have been, in fact, up until just recently, we had the largest battery in the United States. It's in, I believe, Nootrees, Texas. There's someone has just built a larger one. But, you know, so we're doing battery technology. We have a project coming online at John Hopkins Middle School in St. Petersburg, which happens to be a special needs shelter. But just to put it into perspective, the cost of battery storage today. Now, we will be using that battery to balance our grid and everything in that area during the year. But again, the primary purpose is for that special needs shelter to be able to run, you know, for, you know, hopefully we don't have another weak outage, but if we do, that battery alone is $20 million. So again, that's what I'm saying. It's, we're still, in my opinion, where battery storage is the game changer in the energy industry.
Thank you. Okay. We have about seven minutes before we have to wrap this up. So I had, I'm not going to ask questions. I'm just going to tell you guys because I know that you all are in the process of negotiation on our agreement. And there's a couple of things I'd like you all, and I think we would all like to see as a part of that discussion. Our decorative light poles, we've been limited on those light poles as to what they can be. And, you know, they're coming out with smart poles and all different kinds of things. And so would like to have the ability to have, I mean, those light poles that we have right now are, and Bob will tell you, they're rather, you know, inexpensive. And we can't hang anything on them like flowers or anything. You know, there's a whole number of myriad of things we've wanted to do with those light poles that we can't because we're limited. So would like to see that improved. Charging stations, there was discussion about the rebate program, whatever that is. I mean, we need some more charging stations. We need to understand if there are charging stations that can accommodate golf carts and how that all works. We've got a garage we're going to talk about building, you know. We need a bunch in the downtown is what I'm saying. So whatever kind of deal you can work out there. The substation, I think that's on San Christopher, right? Is there anything we can do to improve it aesthetically? It's pretty damn ugly. Whether it's a white fence or something, I mean, plants, something. It's pretty ugly. You know, right in the middle of a neighborhood. That's pretty much it, I think. For me, anyway. I don't know if you all have anything that you want to add to that. But Mo, I appreciate all the work you've done, you know, on this and Jorge. I know you're going to keep working to get our agreement the best it can be and we appreciate that.
I'm going to make a couple comments.
Sure, please.
Yeah, you know, it's been, you know, almost a year process. And the goal from the beginning for the whole commission, the goal that became our goal in the meetings was getting a Dunedin-specific overview of the state of our electrical energy system. And I have to say, after the first really tough meeting where all the players were there for that first meeting, you know, Duke got engaged. And I thank all of you that are here. I especially thank Chris because Chris, you know, got into my kindergarten head to try to say, hey, how do we make this understandable and Dunedin-specific? And of course Jeff, thank you to you as well. And Mike was a lot of those meetings. And Bob, you've had a lot of great things today and other two gentlemen that are here. I think a lot of it was to get out a lot of pent-up frustration. And you did, especially in the first meeting, take a lot of that hit. And, but then came back as professionals to say, how can we kind of do what this commission is asking us to do? So it's about resetting our relationship, which I feel like, you know, for me, and I know you haven't had the kind of interactions, but I think this was all about resetting the relationship. And then we can move forward. I think what I've learned from it, Duke's made a lot of improvements specifically related to Dunedin since Irma, which had, you know, really probably, you know, is the dynamite that really exploded a lot of issues. You're continuing to do that. I personally, as part of this process, as we've moved along, reached out to some of the citizens that were screaming at me as late as, you know, pandemic and things going out. And, you know, the word I got from the ones that I talked to were so much improved, so much improved, so positive. Self-healing is a good thing. Again, I continue to ask our citizens to reach out if there's problem areas, not just to Duke, but to us, so we can continue to build the relationship, you know, and do the best we can for our citizens. Definitely, you know, there's more work to be done and we're going to continue to challenge. We have been able to do some things in past franchise agreements. It doesn't always have to be part of the agreement. It can be kind of sitting on the side of the agreement, but things that are priorities of us. And I know that the mayor brought up a couple of them, my personal. The decorative lighting is a really personal one of mine, but and the ability to do some things in our main areas.
Is that my cutoff alarm?
Yeah, there it is. That's your cutoff. But anyway, again, I just, and I want to, I want to thank staff because, you know, Jorge and Keith and Will and Paul was in some of those as well, you know, thanks for all the work. Because we had many, many meetings, so. And Zoom calls.
Any final comments, Commissioner Torga?
No, I would just like, hope that we can stay on top of that smart stuff and hopefully hear more back as it relates specifically to Dunedin and how that is affecting us. So I think that's, I think from what I've heard, that's a major, a major player in this, all of this. Is that correct? I think, yeah. Thank you.
Final comments?
Yes, you know, I just want to say, and I do thank all of you all here. I thank all of our staff and Commissioner Franny that have worked so hard on this project. But, you know, I was thinking about, I was ranting over eight days and I'm, I thought to myself, that is not empathetic to people that went through, you know, Katrina and the Ninth Ward. And I've read books on it. I mean, so I'm not meaning to be non-empathetic. People have it so much worse. And you look at the tornadoes and the, you know, that are up in the Midwest and you look at, you know, fires in California and, but I do believe that we're going to continue to see this volatility. And we all have to be ready for that volatility, whether it's hurricanes, tornadoes, flood, peril of flood, you know, fire, whatever. And it's really going to take us all working together because the grid is going to change. You know it. And with the whole new net zero, the whole thing, the new changes. So it really is on a much broader scale. It's going to take every one of us in almost a public-private partnership to work on this because we are going to continue to see it, this volatility in climate change.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, for, let's see, five years it took to get to this point, so I appreciate it. But I think, I think you guys have heard what we've had to say in addition to finding the Clearwater ordinance and look for ways to require other utilities to move when we need it to be moved or, you know, that kind of thing. You guys will talk about that and keep us informed. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Real quick, I was just going to say, I'm assuming y'all are active in the Florida League of Cities? Because I know joint use is a pain point and that's a kind word for me to say about joint use. So if there is anything that we can help, I always, I don't know, I have to believe that with as many cities we have in Florida that this issue has come up before. Because, you know, I feel very confident that we would support, you know, what you're talking about because it would make our life easier as well, so.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
All right. We got a couple of things. All right, we have the commission discussion. We have, to my knowledge, we have three items. So Commissioner or Vice Mayor Kynes, you have an item?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
It was just brought to me actually yesterday and it is a gentleman that lives in the historic African-American Dunedin neighborhood. And he was, he is very interested in working with all the neighbors. What you're going to see before you is a, I think we call them grand oaks. And this is a historic meeting site for the African-American community. Vinnie actually sent the gentleman to me. And we do need to do a lot more research. We thought perhaps if we could, if it comes to fruition, a historic marker, perhaps we could do it on Juneteenth, which would be in the historic African-American community. And Jennifer just asked me, you know, before our staff spends more time on it because we have to do more historical research, we'll be working with the History Museum. We'll be working with United, which is our, basically our Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee. So I just really need your thoughts or approval on the ability to go forward to continue to look at this project.
Doesn't the Historical Committee do this?
Well, this is, depending on all the research and how it goes forward, this is how it would go. United or the DEI would probably bring it to HPAK. The HPAK then would probably be the decider. It would also be the funder of the historic plaque. See, we have funding for the historic plaque. So that's how it would run, depending again, because we still need more history and data. But I do want to mention this, a man is Fred Lewis that brought this forward. Very, very involved and interested in this community. So again, it's just, right now I'm asking your approval to pursue.
Jennifer, you have any issues with it?
I don't, ma'am.
Okay. Sounds good to me. You okay? John, you okay?
No problem at all.
All righty. Thank you. Okay. Was that correct? And you had something?
I have something.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, the main thing that I have is that I've been notified by the chamber that, of course, we're scheduled and we've talked about the dates for the Toronto Blue Jays game. You know, hopefully baseball by the time June comes, we don't know what's going to happen in spring training, of course. But as far as the trip that the chamber takes to Toronto, they need to understand who of all of us is going to go. I bring this up because I don't know where else to bring it up. We can, we can deal with that. But of course, in, you know, historically, the funding has been different, so I don't know how that will work. But they do need to know because they have a limited number of people that can go. And obviously they're giving us priority, so they need to know, so that they can determine who else can go. So I don't know how we want to move forward on that, Jennifer, but.
Well, we have an annual, it's supposed to be on an annual agenda. So now that you've reminded us.
Okay, cool.
Let's do our, that's in our rules and regs or whatever. We'll add it to the agenda and everybody can think about, what would you like to see? Do you have a preference?
What do you mean, what would I like to see?
Well, I mean, anybody have a preference, whether it's a single person or multiple people or?
I don't, I don't have a preference either way. I fully intend to go as the city lays on. But other than that, it's up to everyone else individually.
So we will put together.
And I'm sure you'll understand who from staff might go.
Right. So maybe we could do that actually the second meeting then, the second Tuesday in March. Would that be enough time? Do you want to do it?
Well, you can talk to, you can talk to the chamber
Yeah.
because they seem pretty anxious to find out so that they can get other people thinking and know how many spots they have.
We can get it, we can put it on for the eighth. But you've already, you're about to approve the agenda?
No, we already approved it.
We did approve it.
You already approved it, so.
Wait.
Right.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, you've already.
It should be on a, we could put it on, it should be on a Tuesday meeting, whatever the first Tuesday is.
Put an action item on the eighth then.
Yeah, and other than that, I mean, I don't have anything else. Obviously, I don't have any knowledge of what's going to happen with spring training. Greater people than me.
Can I just ask, where are we on the lockdown or whatever it's?
Uh, you know.
There's a lockdown.
Yeah.
Actually, I just got a text message from Vince, which I misread and thought that the lockdown was over with and I was all happy.
Lockout.
Lockout.
It's actually a lockout.
Lockdown, lockouts.
Lockout.
They're still locked out.
They're still locked out. It's not the lockdown.
No, not the lockdown, it's the lockout.
Well, I want to be sure and get that right.
Well, things did not go well on Saturday. And union, union players, union was underwhelmed by the owners' offer. And so it's, it's not expected to, you know, it's not getting better. Let's put it that way.
And so, I mean, can I just ask, so, and so what, how, what, I guess I can ask you to look into a crystal ball. If it's not resolved by a certain time, how will it affect our spring training?
Well, I think it already has.
Yeah, I think right now, in my personal opinion, again, you know, I'm the liaison, but I'm not an expert on this. I think it absolutely is going to affect us. The question is. The question is how deep, will we get any of the spring training? Will we get part of the spring training? I don't know. I have personally, on purpose, not called Mark Shapiro on this until after Thursday night's Blue Jay Hotel item. I just didn't want to have anything on record that I'm talking to Blue Jays until that's determined. But after that, I'll call him. But again, you've talked to him Jennifer, and I know that, again, he's in the middle of it. So, there's only so much he can say.
Okay, I mean, maybe I shouldn't have asked, but.
No, you can ask.
You know, okay, thank you.
Just continue to be hopeful.
Okay, John, did you have any commission discussion?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. All right, well, y'all got my very long email, apologize for that. But it was in regards to just trying to keep our meetings flowing in a good order and being able to get done on time. So, I don't want to go through this word by word. You, you saw what I've suggested.
I did, and I need to pull it up because I meant to have it copied or printed for me.
Regarding the charter official updates, are you guys all okay with that? Just letting me know when you've got an update?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor, can, can we just, I just want to find it first so I'm tracking with you? It came directly from you, right?
Yep.
Come on Mo, we're trying.
I'm trying, oh, there we go, colleagues. Colleagues. Okay, see more, there we go. Okay, I got it, thank you very much for waiting.
No problem. So, the charter official updates, you guys are all okay with that? Okay. And then the commission discussion where we just shoot everybody an email that you've got something to, you know, to talk about? That way I can, like today I was able to say, okay, 12 o'clock, I'm stopping this conversation so we have enough time for people to talk, you know? Is everybody okay with that? Nikki, you don't have any sunshine law? As long as nobody's replying all or anything, right?
You guys cannot, yeah, you can't communicate, but you can.
You can do one-way emails.
And you can send information through, I mean.
Yes.
But I mean, it's, it's only information if you say, I will have a topic, hello.
Well, that's what you did, I mean, and you can do that. But I think in some cases, when it's something that's really going to be thought provoking.
I read the emails to ask to please, I mean, to, to at least let the clerk know and then she would indicate it on the agenda. That's how I thought the communication was going to occur.
Except that, well, then that, you're really going to want people to know way too far ahead of time. I mean, that's.
The agenda or the cheat sheet? I'm sorry, the cheat sheet. Yeah, that's what I thought you meant. You mentioned that, it would then be noted on the cheat.
I don't see the cheat sheet until I walk in the door.
Okay.
So, that doesn't, I don't want to have to see it and review it before I get here.
I'm just trying to think of that way that was very clear that there's nothing, there's no communication going on about what the item is or that an item is requested.
I mean, it doesn't say what the topic's on, it could, you know, it's nothing.
Okay, well, then that's a problem. Because what we've been talking about is when it comes up, when certain conversations, and I, I don't have an example for you, but when you don't know it's coming, you haven't had a chance to think about it. And they bring it up and it's like, well, nobody can answer the question.
Well, but, so I think that, so that part I thought was directed more toward people who are not on the board. So, if you have a question for legal, rather than asking the question in discussion, call me and say, I've come, I have this question I'm going to bring up, so I'm prepared. I didn't take that as making, you know, the time for commission discussion, as I understood, was the time for y'all to bring up. None of you have heard this before, I want to put this on a future agenda.
Okay, so if you want to leave it at just topic, that's fine.
I mean, I, I think that's the only way to do it, Mayor, without you all otherwise, you know.
Well, I just sent out this email and you didn't say anything about it?
Oh, no, I think the email, I thought the email, and that was why I was saying, the way I read, the substantive items would still be discussed for the first time at the meeting.
Well, that's what I'm saying for everybody else to do.
Yeah, yes.
So, you are okay with putting the subject on there?
Just the subject.
No, no, see, I get what she's saying. We're, we're giving you a heads up, I've got a topic.
All right, I'm about ready to come over there and.
Okay.
Because I'm telling you, we've been, we operated under these rules before.
Okay, the question is, and I, the way that I read your email from yesterday was that.
Forget what my email said.
Okay.
What I'm saying is, I sent an email with a lot of information in it. You didn't have a problem with that, right?
And no one replied to it?
No, but no one replied to it.
No.
Right, that's.
Now, we're talking about it.
That, but, exactly, so that's my point.
Right.
If somebody has a commission discussion item, to give us a heads up and to give us a heads up on what it is, nobody replies all so that people have a little chance to think about it.
I just said, I.
I think that the, this is an example where the, maybe the devil is in the details. And yes, you know, one-way communications can occur so that people have background and information. But in terms of doing that routinely, then there does become, so we, we want to make sure that, that the discussion is occurring here. And, and I don't, I only bring that up because when I read over the rules, I read commission just items to bring, it says on the agenda, to bring forth for future discussion. So, no one should be bringing a discussion item expecting that everyone else then has vetted it and researched it and come together with an opinion. The, the way that it reads even on the agenda is that it's to bring something up that then you want to schedule for a future discussion. So, I, I hope that helps to take the pressure off too, that just because an item is brought forth, it's really to bring an item forth to say, I want to make this a future discussion because you all can't talk to one another in between. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay.
It does, so.
Thank you, I'm glad we had.
We're still going to send the email just to say there's going, I have an item.
I have a to, yeah.
I have a topic. Because I think understanding, that's the purpose that I asked for is that I have an understanding of how much time to get us out of here on time.
And like you did today, you said, I know we've got three, we've got three topics.
Right, and I knew I wanted to cut off at 12 to give it time.
No, I understand that. Well, you always had a long discuss, you just had a big workshop.
Well, I knew that was going to be.
Yeah.
Okay, so, is everybody okay with that? I think now with signaling that you're going to have a, a topic. And can we, can we in general, unless emergent, limit to one topic per person, per meeting?
I don't think it's necessarily, I mean, you might have, I mean, I could have easily talked about an issue with Tampa Bay Regional Planning today.
I know, I have.
Based on everything, I'm like, okay, I'm not, I'm just not going to do it. I can do that via staff. So, to me, it's not necessarily the number, it's that, I think sometimes, I have felt, and I'm sure I've done it too, that sometimes, you know, an issue that's brought is just like long and involved and, and we're at being, and we're kind of, there's this expectation to make, you know, a consensus decision sometimes. So, I just think it's, if you have an item that you want to put on the agenda, you know, a couple minutes of a description articulately done as to why that might be important to do versus, you know, trying to explain the whole issue.
Right.
Just enough to know whether it's of merit to all of us to put it on.
Like what Commissioner Kynes just did, Vice Mayor, sorry.
But I mean, I think in general, it's fine. I mean, I don't typically have more than one topic, so, I mean, but I don't want to like, oh.
Well, that's what I said, I don't want to dictate. I'm just saying.
No, and I appreciate that you're.
If we can just keep it in our mind, I feel like, and sometimes there's going to be emergent time where you've got to cover a couple of things. But I just think it's helpful in keeping things moving.
Good.
Everybody else okay? All right.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure I really fully understand this, but I, I understood how it worked before. We had, we had commission discussion and that, that's when we wanted to bring something up. It might have been short and sweet, or it might have to go on a future agenda. And so, I, I wasn't worried about doing it here because I know I wasn't, there was no sunshine concern at all. So, I was doing it right up in the open. Your letter, I appreciate you asking heard, it was my letter, okay? Because your letter was quite, quite thorough about what the discussion was. And so, for me, that was, you know, thank gosh, nobody answered it in my opinion, okay? Which I expect, assume nobody would. But to me, that was a little bit more revealing than what I, than what I thought would be comfortable for all of us, but I don't know. But I also think that there's times when we may want to bring something up. We didn't know about it until the day before and now we want to bring it up. And we're not really quite sure what we want to say, so I don't know what the timing would, of that might be. But I'm okay for somebody to bring it up here without me knowing about it. And we could say, well, we don't have a concern about it, so we don't, or we do. And so, but I appreciate what you're trying, what you're trying to do, totally.
Well, I think what she, what she, Nikki is saying is that, go ahead and send the email that says, I have a topic, just don't get into an explanation of it.
Okay, good.
So, I, for, because for my purpose, for my sole purpose, it's not to.
It's volume, it's not substantive.
Exactly.
And it's making sure.
It's just trying to understand what our timing is going to be because, you know, sometimes we can all have a topic and then you've got a topic Nikki, and you've got a topic, and you've got a topic. Now, it's like, oh, we're never going to get out of here on time. Or, we're going to stop and not bring things up that we really need to talk about.
No, I think that, that's exactly what, what I'm saying, Mayor. Thank you for summarizing. And I do think that that's important to your job as presiding over the meetings is understanding the volume that you have to get through. And so, Mayor, does that, or Commissioner, does that help answer your question?
Well, then I also want to make sure that Mo could, if, for example, Mo has something that's just come up, as I was saying, the day before, and she thinks it's important that I know about it, whether it's an issue that's going to come before us, she still needs to be able to bring it up if it's two or three things. I would want her to be able to do that. I would want, just, I'm using you just as an example, any one of us, so.
Well, not, I don't, this is more the mayor, but I think what she's saying, as long as there's time, that's fine. But this, if we know about, if you, if you know ahead of time, then help manage the volume.
Well, and then I'll be able to see if there is a problem.
Right.
And we'll have to figure out how to address it. If I walk in the door to the meeting, like today, I said, we're going to try to shut this down by noon. I can say to everybody, look, we have this many items under informational updates. So, we either have to cut short or can anybody remove the number of items they're going to, you know, lower.
Not time sensitive or things like that.
Right, but that, that's just, it's just about communication, really. It's not about judgment or anything else.
Right, yeah.
And then we just need to make sure we plan for that time schedule.
Yes.
Period.
Absolutely.
That solves most of it.
Before you continue though, if I could make one statement.
Sure.
Wasn't sure I totally agreed with this. And thank you for doing this because I do think this is good. And it has, I mean, when meetings run an hour and a half long, you know, that, that becomes a serious problem. But I think somewhere in here that the agendas are being populated. And I, again, I've made this comment, I'll just say it for the record. You know, long meetings on Tuesday running an hour to an hour and a half over and 45 minutes on Thursday, we walk out the door. You know, that, you know, clearly there's some management there and I think we've talked about it, so.
Yep.
And, and again, I think, like you said, we'll, we'll focus on the, if we focus on the, the proposed agendas, just keep in mind, thinking about two agendas. Are we have, we overstacked Tuesday and we have under stacked Thursday, so.
Gotcha.
I concur.
Work session items, I mean, I, I think that's pretty, all I, all I'm asking is that we keep our questions more policy-related than, than, you know. And a lot of times too, when we have workshops or informational items, we tend not to have an agenda review of them. I'm suggesting that maybe we need to in order to, in order to reduce the, the amount of time that we're spending on asking questions that maybe aren't relevant to the decision we're trying to make. So, again, I don't want to stymie anyone of what they're trying to accomplish, whether it's for themselves or the residents that are listening, I totally get that. It, it all includes myself. I need to think about what I'm going to ask too and why I'm asking it or does it need to be asked while I'm sitting here versus when I'm talking to Jorge or Jennifer or whomever. And, you know, if I find that's going on, I'm, I'm going to have to bring back the conversation to where it needs to be. I've avoided doing that because I never want to seem disrespectful. As, there's nothing more important to me than everybody having their, I mean, that's the sign of a good chair is, is if everybody has their say. And so, I don't, I'm not trying to hinder that in any way.
I agree with that though, you know, again, used to be on the staff side of this and, you know, that, that was always, you know, that's a purpose for the pre-meetings to try to get the smaller issues out of the way. I mean, you know, I mean, sometimes I ask a question out here, I know the answer. I'm just asking it.
There's a reason it.
I'm asking because I think the public should know the answer too. But there's a lot of small things that can be taken care of behind the scenes and, and, and it's good. It's efficient, it's, you know, it's not that important that everybody in the world know. It's just things that we need to understand so we make a good decision. So, I think that's a great, you know, just a reminder.
Yeah. And then the citizen input, which is ironic because we've talked about it a couple of times. And listen, again, I am not trying to stop any of you from giving your opinion on something. You have every right to do that. I'm just looking for all the little ways that I can shrink time out of our meeting, you know.
And if I may add to that, Mayor, because there was a recent incident, we all probably will recall what it was. And I was very disturbed by it and I did, I did intervene and I'm not sorry that I intervened. But as I, I, I looked into some things after the fact, including people that were specifically named as examples and found out there was more to the story. So, there is a reason it's good to, unless it's just really something just, we had to get it out. And I did because I still have a concern with that issue. But I understand the facts from the particular person may be a little different, so. But in general, it is good to make sure we're getting both sides. And the way to do that is, you know, take the information, let staff look at it and let them appropriately staff it so we're seeing the whole picture, so. Since I was a recent, you know, person, I thought I would give that example.
While you're looking for your next, next note, Mayor, we try to make that clear too in the notices by, this is the time to be heard. And being heard means the time that you all are, are charged with listening. And sometimes people don't always feel, not, not that it matters necessarily at the feeling, but, you know, to allow people to, to know that their responses are being listened to and then furthered forward rather than just an immediate response.
But I will say, I 100% agree that when you give basic answers to basic questions that people ask, I would think it would be crazy land not to ask those, answer those questions right then. To me, it's rude.
It is rude.
So, I totally agree with that process.
But we never did here. And it always made me feel weird.
Yeah, no, I, I think that keeping that piece of it is a good thing.
Okay, and then Commission comments. Everything I've said here, I think, is all normal stuff, so I appreciate you hearing me out and I'll do my best to try to keep these meetings running smooth. We've got four minutes, so, for whatever reason, I can't seem to find my agenda here. So, I think it's City Manager update, but go ahead.
It is, Mayor, and I'd like to give you an overview of that issue.
I'm sorry, what?
I'd like to give you an overview of that issue with the dogs off, off leash.
Mm-hmm. You have 10 seconds? No, I'm just kidding. Just a joke.
Eleven.
I'll talk really fast. I'll talk really fast.
I'm kidding.
And, and in fact, this is an operational issue and solely an operational issue. The, the gentleman has approached the commission twice. He's very passionate, I understand. And the issue is dogs, the certain hours that dogs are permitted off-leash at Hammock Park. The, and I'm going to read you a section of the code as it pertains to off-leash hours. It's as an exception, and this is under the animal control definitions. It says, as an exception to the animal confinement restrictions, which is the leash law. In this section, the City Manager may designate at his or her discretion designated animals to be unleashed or unrestrained on certain specified public property for the purpose of special events, unique occasions, or for other reasons deemed to be in the public interest by the City Manager for such limited time periods as the City Manager shall deem appropriate and as confirmed in writing. Now, I know that you have been approached and, and those approaching you are asking you to change the leash law hours. Being an operational issue and the section, the code, the section, the section of the code I just read you, it is in the City Manager's office to determine that unless the City Commission deems to amend the code itself. So, that said, we, staff did convene, we had a very long meeting on this issue. We don't want to do any knee-jerk reactions. There are two sides to every story. There are those who are using that park and they've been using it for many years. And they've been doing it, they're not the bad actors, if you will. And so, we need to listen to them as well. We need to arrive at a conclusion, I think, that will address the gentleman who came to the City Commission as well as those who have the use and enjoyment of the park as is right now, meaning off-leash for certain hours of the day. We did, on that, at that meeting, we had the Sheriff's Office, we had our risk manager, Teresa Smalling, and members of Parks and Recreation Staff. And we are arriving at what we feel are very good conclusions. Are they going to make everybody happy? Probably not, but we need to listen to all of those who have. But we need to listen to all of those who have an interest in this issue and listen to them fairly. And we will, when, when that decision is made, Mayor and Commissioners, I will, I will submit it to you in writing. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it, and appreciate the fact that, I think we all do, that you're looking at all sides of the issue.
Absolutely.
And if I may, I don't know if you're, I mean, and I appreciate that you're listening to each side. Just want to make sure we're listening to the professional side, animal people. I mean, I was with a veterinarian the other night, and they're like, "What?" We just need to understand if the basic premise of it makes sense, no matter how good some of the people are.
Right.
Does the premise and the liability that we're putting ourselves into, granted, nothing's happened. But as our safety man who used to say, "What hasn't happened in 10,000 years will happen tomorrow."
Right.
And it could be horrific.
And that's exactly what we're doing. We're benchmarking, we're talking to professionals, and, and we need to reconvene the Hammock Advisory Committee as well, and talk to them a little bit more in depth. So that's what we're doing.
And, and again, I'm just going to say this for the record, I just, I just alluded to it. Both peoples whose names were brought up in citizens' input last time, I spoke to them directly, and the story was completely different, so... So that's the importance of listening to all sides, making sure we have all the facts.
Exactly.
Thank you, Mayor. And besides that, our written update is submitted on the publisher agenda for your review, and that is an overview of the city operations for the month.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I skipped right over you over there, girlfriend, city clerk.
Actually, I just have a real quick one, trying to keep us on time. Laura, do you want to come up, and so I can introduce, just because she may be answering the phones, or you'll have somebody new, so if you want to take your mask off so they can see your face.
This is our new deputy city clerk. Wow, you really do look like Denise.
Never mind.
This is Laura, and she, she's been with us, what, three weeks now, has it been?
Two and a half.
Two and a half weeks? And so she comes to us from, oh, gosh, and you know I say it wrong each time. She was born and raised in Illinois, but she, Elgin, how to say it from Elgin?
Elgin.
Elgin. I want to say, the Elgin Police Department, just out, up in Illinois. And so one of the things that really attracted, which you guys will like, is her records management skills and her, so she's very versed in the Freedom of Information Act and those sorts of things, so we're really excited to have her. And one of the quick, quick things that we found, what, you were just second day? We realized that we both served with the same person in the U.S. Navy. I actually was in boot camp with it, with her, and then she served with her a little bit later because she's younger. But it was just kind of a small world, right? Just in conversation, she goes, "Do you know Lisa?" I'm like, "Yes, I do."
That's really cool.
So anyway, that was just a quick, but just, if you want to say anything, but, but just, we're just really excited to have her.
Thank you very much. I'm excited to be here as well, and I know I've met a few of you. I know I've met you, and Jennifer, I've met you as well. So I didn't get to meet the rest of you personally, but hopefully, within time, I'll be able to do all of that. But thank you for having me, and I appreciate the opportunity.
You're going to love it, especially when we get in the new building.
Oh, yeah, new building.
Yeah, don't, don't look at your office at this point. It doesn't count. All right. Thank you, thanks for joining us.
Welcome.
Glad you're here.
Very much, I appreciate it.
Mayor, if we could potentially violate your desire to shorten the meetings, and Keith wanted to introduce a new employee as well.
See, that should have been under City Manager update.
I didn't tell her about it.
Actually, some of you have met Michelle Marticlero already. So we stole Michelle from Pinellas County.
Yay!
I like that, Jorge likes it, too.
Good job, Jorge.
Almost thought we were going to have to get into a bidding war. Michelle worked in environmental management for Kelly Levy.
Kelly's mad at us now.
So she was actually, what I did find out, she was a ghostwriter for Kelly. All the emails that we were getting for Red Tide.
Oh, that was Michelle.
Wow.
But very well-educated. I'm not going to read the resume, she's going to read the resume. So, but actually, as far as stormwater and picking up where our former employee left off, this girl has probably more, way more knowledge of the stormwater field than I could ever wish I could have. She's going to pick this up when it comes to code compliance. She knows the word.
Yeah, thank you.
She's, that's what she did mostly at Pinellas County. From, from the field all the way to the county attorney's office.
Very good.
Well-versed. I'm going to let you take it from there.
Michelle, I have extensive, an extensive background in water quality. Also, I enforced our stormwater ordinance, fertilizer ordinance, familiar with pond compliance as well. I have extensive field background in terms of, I monitored St. Joseph Sound, probably one of the most beautiful areas in this county. Also, as well as Bentick sediment sampling. So all the environmental science background, that's, that's all me. So if you have any questions, please feel free to ask me. Hope to get a lot of projects off the ground, through grants especially. Looking forward to that, living shorelines, definitely, if we can. So, yes.
Very cool.
Wonderful.
I have a master's in environmental management. I studied the Great Barrier Reef. That was my area concentration, its management, as well as, you know, we're looking at coral bleaching and, and really the communities living around the Great Barrier Reef. So I spent three years in Australia.
Oh, cool.
Studying, studying that area.
Very cool.
Thank you.
Well, welcome to our city, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Very cool. Thanks, thanks, Keith.
Good job, Keith, thank you.
Okay, Nikki, did you have anything?
I don't have anything substantive, but I did want to let the Commission know that I need to be traveling on Thursday evening, so I'll need to be attending virtually, if that is acceptable. I know that you do have the second reading of the Development Agreement ordinance on your agenda.
Yeah, okay, that'd be great.
Thank you.
I'm going to, for me personally, under Commission comments, I'm just going to email you guys what my important things that I have been holding for a couple of months, so I don't need to talk about them. Anybody else have comments?
I have two real quick, because, again, I'm going to say Trashy Treasures is coming up. It's March 4th. $10 to get in and buy all these trashy treasures. DFAC, it goes on the next day with art supplies. It goes on the next day, on Sunday, for half off. And then the final day, it's like, whatever you want to take, you take. And then, second of all, real quick, I do want to congratulate John and Allison Freeborn, who were named Patron of the Arts by the Dunedin Fine Arts Center. And their family has a long and storied background of, of working in the arts. And that was very well-deserved. If you see them, please congratulate them. And last of all, the Foodways exhibit at the Dunedin History Museum begins at 5:30 this Friday. The Foodways exhibit. And that is it. Thank you.
Yeah, just really quickly, Tampa Bay Regional Planning, they've got their Resiliency Summit, Resiliency Leadership Summit, coming up on April 5th and 6th. You know, and encourage any of us that could go to go, but it unfortunately is Tuesday and Wednesday, which I think we have a commission meeting, so I will prob, I will be in, so I'll probably miss that Tuesday morning meeting. The Future of the Region Awards are going to be awarded at the luncheon on the 6th. They are, they're working out a way that those who, who want to attend, depending on the awards, can come. Obviously, they're...
Just for the luncheon?
Yeah, just for the luncheon, but it's going to be a problem. It's not going to be unlimited, because depending on how busy the conference is, they can only let so many people in. But, you know, it, it's one, I think, we're putting it on COVID, you know? It was merged together as two events, because we didn't even know that any, who, what was going to be able to happen. We had a lengthy discussion about it at yesterday's meeting. Everybody realizes the importance of Future of the Region Awards. It'll probably be separated again next year, so that the luncheon can stand alone. But in the meantime, since I'm convinced that we're going to win one big one, are we, do we have our, are we doing our applications?
We are.
Okay.
What are we doing? The Future of the Region Award and the, and the...
Oh, I thought you said what we were doing.
Yeah, no, no.
Okay. You don't have to. And the Misable Achievement Awards, through the Spirit of the City is the one we're going for, for the Gladys Douglas.
Spirit of the City, we won the Spirit of the City once.
Oh, really? Oh, we're going to win again.
It was awesome. It was like a great, it was great. A matter of fact, I'd rather win that one than almost any other one. Anyway, that was it. I just wanted to update everybody, so I would encourage whoever wants to come, depending on our awards, which I'm sure will be many, you know? We'll, we'll figure out the way, that's what they're trying to do, is figure out the way.
I thought we, I thought we bought a table.
We do, but it's not going to quite be like that. Ren is going to figure out exactly what they're going to do now. What they've done is they want to encourage as many people as who want to come, to be able to come. It's just going to be different. There won't be the tables because it's merged with the conference. So it's going to be a little different, so they're asking everybody for patience on that. It'll be separated again next year, but in the meantime, we'll make do. So once we understand it better, I will make sure the Commission knows. And whoever can come, I encourage you to try to come.
You might want to see where it's going to be held.
It's going to be at the, the place it typically is, with the Carolan. Is it Carolan, yeah?
Yeah, the Marriott, no, not the Marriott.
It's not Hilton, I think it's Hilton.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's Hilton, and so... And it's on the 6th. That's it.
John, anything?